Call the July 22, 2008, meeting of the City Council to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all council members are present.
Okay, City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
Yes, Mayor. The Council tonight in closed session approved a purchase agreement to sell a portion of city-owned leased property next to their oil fields to the Orange County Sanitation District for the purposes of allowing them to redevelop a new pump station. The terms of the agreement are the payment of the city of $90,000 for the price of the lease interest that the city owns and the construction of a new electrical panel at the cost of about $400,000 for the benefit of the city on their pumping facilities. So I have an extra copy of that here, it's available for anybody who wants to review it, and then the signed copy will be available in the Clerk's office.
Okay, thank you. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Hen and remain standing for the invocation by Pastor John Embry?
Please recite with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. We thank you gracious God for the privilege of living in this place of beauty, of recreation, of safety, and we pray for wisdom for these who are serving as our council and for all of us who are entrusted with the care of this community and also as hosts for those who come to visit, this beaches, homes, businesses here. It is an entrustment to us as your people. So may the discussions of this night be courteous and may they be well fruitful. Amen. Thank you Pastor. We have no presentations tonight, so Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cellphones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for City Council announcements of matters which council members would like place on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, Councilmember Hen?
Three things, Mr. Mayor. First off, when we get on the consent calendar to the vote with regard to the Assessment District for District 100, I happen to live in District 100, it would therefore be appropriate for me to abstain from that vote. And if the Mayor Pro Tem would make sure that that's how the resolution or the motion established, I'd appreciate it. And then I had the very happy pleasure of attending the McFadden Square Centennial Memorial dedication on Monday morning of this week, yesterday morning. And it was a humbling experience and I am proud that the Mayor and I were able to undrape the new memorial, which is a wonderful thing, supported by, I think, every member of the City Council and of course, city staff, Homer and others. It's a great thing, I'm very pleased on behalf of my district and the McFadden Square area and the Newport Peninsula that we were able to have that there. There is still time for any of our citizens to memorialize themselves, our families, or anyone they wish, forever at that plaza. And so I'd encourage you to go over and have a look and see if you don't want to join the celebration. And lastly, on July 30, at 7:00 PM here in the City Council chambers, there will be a forum at which our Assistant City Manager Dave Kiff and a resident by the name of Bob Rush will debate, if you will, the pros and cons and merits and lack thereof of the proposed settlement with the sober living by the sea and the group home situation. And so any of you have an interest in that, you'd be want to be sure to attend. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Daigle?
Yes, I attended some of the events surrounding the Governor's Cup. It's an international sailing competition for young talent and top talent under 20 years old, and it's the Balboa Yacht Club that fosters this tradition. So they had their Friday evening reception and Tommy Bahamas hosted and the coconut shrimp are still to die for. And also you found kids from all over the world with Hurley t-shirts on, so there's a lot of generosity from the community. Local families hosted the teams and the yacht club formed a public benefit corporation with an emphasis on youth, on youth sailing. And so that's how they pay for all the boats, so everyone has the same boat level playing field there. And then on Sunday, the club took me out to the race and there's really a lot to the tactics and the rules of match sailing. As one esteemed and older member of the sailing community told me, he said, you know, sports are about life lessons and the word competition, it comes from Greek words, meaning to strive together. And through the competition, everyone improves. And so we had Australia trying to keep up with the USA, Britain trying to keep up with Australia, Brazil trying to keep up with Britain. And as the sailing elder reminded me, as Magic Johnson used to say, and once the playoffs come, everyone kicks their game up a notch. And so with the Governor's Cup, in addition to people elevating their individual performance and their overall performance, it's also about camaraderie. And so after the races, there's lots of teams talking to each other and kind of bringing about, I think, a different understanding about other countries. So it's a wonderful community event, wonderful for the teams that compete, a very prestigious event for the city. And, oh, I, well, I always bet on the local team and Newport Harbor Yacht Club did win. So it was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner? Councilman Curry?
Just a couple of things. First of all, I want to congratulate David Kiff for the excellent job he did representing the city at the Speak Up Newport event, as was previously mentioned, on the group home issue. And I think you can turn in on the cable channels and have the opportunity to see David, I think you'll find it very informative. And then on Sunday, the Arts Commission put on its, one of its three concerts in the park, this was Opera in the Park at Grand Howell Park, and I want to thank the Arts Commission for another really well-done and fantastic experience that was appreciated by several hundred people who were there in the audience. And then finally, let me announce that on Saturday, on the 25th of July, the Newport Bay Naturalists and Friends will have a plein air art show in Seale that will be at the Muth Center at 2301 University from 6 to 8 in the evening. And encourage all of you to come out and see some great art and support this great cause. Thank you.
Councilman Webb?
As a member of Balboa Yacht Club, I'd like to thank Leslie for taking the time to learn a little bit more about sailing. All of you guys should.
All right, I have nothing. Madam Clerk?
Consent calendar, all matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 21 and item S28 are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The City Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Councilmember Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilman Curry?
No items.
Councilman Webb?
None.
Councilman Hen?
None, other than the extension that I mentioned.
Okay, Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Daigle?
None, thank you.
I have none. Staff?
None.
Does anyone from the public wish to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Thank you, Dick Nichols from Corona Del Mar. I'd like to pull two items. Item number three, which I found, I had to go back to the charter to find out what we were eliminating from the charter for one election. And then item number 17. And I have a suggestion. Is it possible that we could get the Planning Commission's recommendations, you know, before we have the items on the agenda? I mean, it just makes sense if they're going to be a public item and the Planning Commission is taking a position on it, that we might get to hear that before the item is taken.
We'll look into that. Okay, anyone else wish to pull an item? Okay, seeing no one, I'll bring it back for motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve items 1 to 21. S28, we'll be pulling items 3, 17, and recording an extension for Councilmember Hen on number eight.
Second.
Okay, please vote. Okay, Mr. Nichols, item number three?
Motion carries.
This is the ordinance to repeal Chapter 1.30 election campaign documents of the Newport Beach Municipal Code.
Well, don't you think you might explain what that is? I mean...
Well, do you have a question on it and then we'll let the staff...
Yes, I do have a question on it. This is on hit pieces, is it not? And what it is, is it's supposed to give some time for...
So would you like the staff to explain what it is, Mr. Nichols? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, it would be nice, and then I'll make a comment if I could. Thank you.
Well, you can comment now and then...
Okay, I'll make a comment now. This apparently is on hit pieces. I read it through and wanted to find out what it was. And what we're doing is taking a vote to keep it off this election cycle, but then reconsider it when the election cycle's over. And this seems kind of strange, there's probably going to be quite a bit of politics this election cycle. And so I'm wondering, is this something that some of the council members want to do in order to be able to put a hit piece out and have it show up on the opponent? Or, I mean, you're doing it unilaterally and it's not being discussed as to what the effect is on the election or on population in general and/or what this is even about. And so I think it would be appropriate to discuss the amendment a little bit by the city because it's been on the books a long time and has merit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to address this on this item? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the comments. City Attorney, do you want to comment on Mr. Nichols' question?
Sure. I apologize, Mayor and councilmembers. I never really thought that somebody would look at it from this point of view, but I guess I wasn't thinking ahead that far. The, this issue was brought to the council, not at the council's request, but at the request of, or raised by an issue by a member of the public, an attorney by the name of James Lacy, who had asserted the fact that this was an unconstitutional provision. So in looking at this, I went back and discussed it with the city clerk, and it was her concern, and this is clearly described in the staff report, so all the information is in here, that over the years since this enact, since the enactment of this ordinance, that it has been very difficult to enforce. It doesn't have a practical application to it, although it might have had a good point of view at the time when it was enacted. It has not been a practical form of enforcement or a workable form of an ordinance for the purpose for which it was enacted. I did not spend a lot of time looking into the constitutionality of it, but it is possible that subsequent case law, after the time it was adopted, may have some impact on it as well. So the intent is, rather than to leave it on the books and have it impact in a way that the city would not be able to actually enforce it in the end and have a lot of problems related to this ordinance, that we would just recommend that the council repeal it. And then if the council wishes, we could go back and look and see if there's another form of an ordinance that might address the same issues, but in a more practical, enforceable manner.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the City Attorney by council? Councilwoman Gardner?
I hadn't also thought of it from Mr. Nichols' point of view, but I can understand someone reading it, taking it that way. So I'm, I guess I'm wondering, would we want to see something from the City Attorney before that point? When will we have to pass something if we wanted it enforced by November for the election?
Well, that was, the reason why, if you wanted to do that, we'd probably have to pass something quite soon. And the issue was, and one of the reasons why we're making this recommendation now, is we didn't want to get so far into the, to the election season and then have persons like Mr. Lacy or other people start, you know, throwing issues on whether it was enforceable, whether it was constitutional, put the city in a situation of whether they had to defend it. And so we thought it might be better to take that out of the whole issue. I don't know with the priorities, unless the council wanted us to, that we would have the time to go back, research, look and see what would be an appropriate constitutional ordinance that would address the same issues. So if the council wanted us to do that, I don't know that we'd have to probably, we could do it by sending it out if that was a priority for the council before the next election.
Any other comments? Motion?
Well, I hadn't considered in Mr. Nichols' vein, and I am running for election this fall, and so I will be abstaining from this vote because of that. I don't want to be accused of influencing anything. I don't plan on sending out any hit pieces, but I don't want to be responsible for that vote, so I will be abstaining.
I move that we approve the recommendation of the City Attorney and remove the ordinance.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Councilman Curry?
Well, I became aware of this provision in the last election because my opponent actually violated it. I walked into the city clerk's office with a copy of the mailer that had not yet been filed in the period, of course. Now, we didn't do anything about that, but it sort of shows how, you know, this kind of provision can have a big impact in an election. And, you know, Mr. Lacy may in fact raise some good constitutional issues, I think ought to be researched. I personally believe that we need to have some form of regulation in place. I think it was a good ordinance in terms of its intent to clean up the kind of late hit pieces that happen in campaigns. And because I'm also going to be a candidate on the November ballot, I think I'm going to agree and join my colleague, Mr. Rosansky, and I will abstain too, because I don't want anybody saying that we're trying to limit anybody's ability to campaign. But I, for the record, think this is a good law and we want to find a way to reinstitute it as quickly as we can.
Okay, any other comments?
I would just weigh in that I, it seems to me that this could take a fairly considerable amount of time to research constitutional issues associated with this and also other alternatives that may or may not be appropriate to address the issue. And I just think we have way more higher priority issues that our City Attorney should be spending time on than this one right now, and so I'll be supporting the motion for that reason. And I am not running in November.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm running, but I'm going to support it too, so please vote.
With Councilmembers Rosansky and Curry abstaining, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item that was pulled was item number 17. This is the City Council Review of Staff Status Progress Report on Six of the City Council Priorities for 2008.
Dick Nichols, Corona Del Mar. I would, you've done a lot of work on this, the city's doing a lot of work on this now. It's going a little slower. I think that's great because there's a tremendous amount of money involved in these projects. And so I think they need to be carefully thought out and vetted. And these are the six major projects of the city. Now, some of this is on our agenda tonight, and some of this has a little bit to do with what's happening in the Planning Commission. So I, I'm not trying to, what I was trying to suggest is that if the Planning Commission is weighing in on something, we ought to try and get that item up front a little more so that it could weigh in on an item that is being considered on the agenda tonight. They're doing a pretty good job on the Planning Commission. I support them and I would like to just see their, their items be heard at least. And with regard to this, that these six items are major, and I would like just a, at least a one-sentence comment on where we are, because not everybody can attend six hearings in a month, you know, to go find out what's happening in the park on the far side of the town and what about City Hall, is it progressing? And, I mean, these are, they're major projects. I would, I would certainly like to hear the city at least have a one-sentence comment on them if we could.
Just a minute, Dick. Dick?
Mr. Nichols, question?
I'm sorry, I wasn't quite following, so perhaps you can give me an example on the Planning Commission. I'm not quite sure what you're saying, and I want to be sure I do understand.
I'm not positive that I made a correct statement there, Nancy, so I, I'm not gonna, I'd have to go through and look at them. I thought it was on, on that as well, but it, I, I did go through the Staff Status Report and I, and I do feel that these are important issues. I mean, you're, the, what is our status on City Hall for so, but, but your comment, I believe is appropriate because I believe I made a mistake in that statement.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on this item? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close it. Councilman Rosansky?
I was just going to say move to receive a file.
I would just like to make one comment, though. I think that Dick makes a good point, that because we're so familiar with this, and this is a report to council, it seems very complete, but to someone just picking it up, it may not be. And so we might want, as, when you give these, to have a, maybe a sentence or something that clarifies some of these issues as to where, be thinking in terms of someone who's not following it on a daily basis, it might be helpful.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, council actually has 12 priorities, not the six that are up for review here tonight. And what we do is alternate every other month, six and then the other six, in order to make sure that council and members of the public have an adequate status report of where we are in implementing these priorities. So these would be on the web as the agenda is on the web, and it's there for anybody who wants to raise any issues when these items are on the agenda, to ask any questions. But we're doing this to try and make sure that anyone who is interested can understand what steps have been accomplished and what would be the next steps, and hopefully when those steps are anticipated to take place.
And Councilman Webb?
I think the key is that the items are on the web, so if you want to take a few minutes to go through and review those, you can see how they're updated more rapidly than the ever, every other month report that we get. So that, I think that that should answer the question of, do you have the ability to review it? And the answer is yes.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is oral reports from City Council on Committee Activities. Councilman Hen?
I have none.
Councilman Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Daigle?
None, thank you.
Councilwoman Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilman Curry?
Nothing.
Councilman Webb?
I have none.
Okay, and I have none. Okay, we'll move on to public hearings. The first public hearing tonight is Aerie. It's at 201, 205, and 207 Carnation Avenue in 101 Bayside Place. The project consists of the demolition of an existing 14-unit apartment building in single-family residence and the construction of an eight-unit residential condominium building.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just a suggestion, due to what I anticipate the length of this public hearing, might we want to start the assessment hearing, because then they can count the votes and all that?
Well, I think we're going to have time with the other items to start that and take the other items while they're supposed to be counted.
We have consultants waiting here, we've got public, I'm sure, waiting here, and this is probably going to be a two or three hour. Let's hope.
Well, I'm hoping it's two hours. Is there any other thoughts on that?
Well, if we took the last two items, we could do, do the Assessment District while they're counting, we could do the pavilion. I don't think all of that would take very long, and then they could all go home and we could plunge in.
Yeah, I support that.
Okay. All right, the first thing I'm going to ask is, I see a lot of people here, how many plan on speaking tonight? If you could raise your hands, please. Okay, thank you. What I'm going to do is go over the procedure for the, for the hearing this evening on this project. I know that a lot of people are...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I thought we just agreed to move it up.
Yeah, we just agreed. We... Yeah, we just, we were just going to change everything.
Oh, I thought, I thought you guys were talking the other, I understood going the other way.
Let's get the other step out of the way.
Yeah, let's let some of these other people go home.
All right. Okay, we're going to move into the-
Does the applicant mind?
To the assessment district. We're going to start item number 23 on the agenda, which is the proposed assessment district 101, an area generally bounded by Buena Vista Boulevard, Edgewater Avenue, Adams Street, Balboa Boulevard, for undergrounding utilities, and designation is an underground utilities district. So, what we'll do is we'll, hang on a second here, I have a little script I have to read. You took it all out of, all out of, all out of sequence. Okay. This is a hearing required pursuant to the Municipal Improvement Act of 1913, Article 13D of the Constitution of the State of California, in Chapter 15.32 of the City Code. I am announcing that this is the time and the place fixed for the public hearing on protest or objections to the resolution of intention, assessment engineer's report, proposed assessments, and all other matters relating to assessment district number 101, and to designation of the area as an undergrounding utilities district. I want to announce that all written protests and all ballots regarding assessment district 101 must be received by the city clerk prior to the closing of the public hearing. At this point, I'm going to ask the staff to step forward and explain the purpose for the public hearing, describe the extent of the works to be acquired within the boundaries of the district, present and summarize the assessment engineer's report, explain the method and formula of the assessment spread, make recommendations as to any modifications necessary in the assessments or proceedings, explain that the results of the tabulation of the ballots will be announced following the conclusion of the hearing, and explain that the hearing will be designated as an underground utilities district. So, with that, I'll ask the staff person responsible to step forward.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Peter Towser. I'm an engineer working with, in the Public Works Department. Like you said before, this district is bound by Buena Vista, East Edgewater, Adams, and Balboa Boulevard. This district consists of roughly 355 properties, and the cost for undergrounding for this district is going to be approximately $4.75 million. The consultant for the assessment engineer is Muni Financial. He is here if you have any questions regarding the methodology or the engineer's report. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to announce that if we have any, anybody here who wants to recast their ballot, or lost their ballot, or just wants to have a new ballot, we can do that. And remember, the ballots must be submitted before the end of this session. Thank you, if you have any questions for our assessment engineer.
Okay. Any questions from council? Okay, seeing no one, I will open the public hearing. I'm going to ask each property owner to, or speaker, to identify themselves and their property. The first thing is, I'm going to ask to hear from anyone who wishes to speak against the acquisition of the improvements, the assessment district, the undergrounding utilities district, or the method of spread of the proposed assessments. Anyone wanting to speak against it? Okay. Step forward.
Speaking for Sandra Wench, 314 Montero.
You've got to speak into the microphone, sir.
Sorry. I'm speaking for Sandra Wench, 314 Montero. The main thing is here, I wanted to give you this written protest from her, and have you take a look at 13D, Section 6, as far as the method of assessment, especially on the reliability and the, and the visual enhancement, or what we're using here is reliability and neighborhood aesthetic portions, which is assessing the property to the future potential, the highest future potential, and what Section 13D of the State of California has to say about that, Section 6. And I have copies here. Anybody would like to see that?
Okay, hand it to the city manager, and he'll hand it to us. Well, he already did. Oh, I thought he was giving his name. What is your name, sir?
My name is Jack Price.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak against the assessment district, step forward, please. State your name and the address of your property.
I'm BD 307 Lindo Avenue. I've been at this same property since 1938. I'm a retired public servant, and I can tell you that simply, well, I've already voted no, because of the cost. It would be nice, but is it needed or necessary? I think of the, the past history of this city and caring for its elder residents. Sure, we have a nice oasis property and activities there, which I respect and enjoy, but we haven't done much to help older people with affordable housing and to keep them in their properties. Thank God for Prop 13. So, basically, I'm against it, and some of our retired, much older than I am, neighbors have also voted against it, and this is where we're coming from. It's the cost. Even though a cover letter from our city manager, which introduced this voting process to us several months ago, stated that due to the experience and the leveraging power of the city, they're significantly able to reduce the cost. Well, most of my neighbors that did, had to underground in a few years past, paid about half of what we're being assessed on this one. So, I don't call that a significant reduction. So, basically, cost, and yes, definitely against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers against the assessment district? Step forward. Don't hesitate.
Kurt Aninson, 301 Lindo Avenue, Newport Beach. On behalf of Gunvor H. Aninson, same address. I'd like to state that to date, no evidence has been provided by the city with regards to the criteria stated of safety, reliability, and aesthetics. I'd like to be presented the evidence of that. I think aesthetics speaks for itself, but I doubt very much that there's any improved safety or reliability. I am against the undergrounding. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers against? Okay, I'll close that portion of the hearing. I'll now ask to hear from anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the assessment district. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Okay, seeing no one. Does anyone have any written ballots that they want to submit to the city clerk at the last minute here? We're closing the balloting. Any, any written ballots? Okay, I'm going to announce that all written protests and ballots have been received by the city clerk at this time, and that no more written ballots or protests may be submitted, and I'm closing the public hearing. Well, she just has a ballot for Leilani, I think. So, city clerk, do we have all the ballots now?
Yeah.
Okay. Right, we're going to continue this proceeding until the counting of the ballots, and it will be taken up again later in the agenda. Okay, now we'll go back to the Aerie project. Going to do pavilions too? Okay. Okay, we'll go to number 24, Pavilion's Wine Tasting Appeal, 21181 Newport Coast Drive, used permit 2007029, to add a wine and beer tasting counter within an existing Pavilion's Staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is McCannanova. I'm the project planner for this application. This project for Pavilion's Wine Tasting was approved by the Planning Commission on April 17th, and appealed by the applicant with the request to revise conditions, particularly number nine, regarding LEEDs training for all persons serving alcohol, and also the number of employees required at the wine tasting counter. The applicant is requesting to change that condition to just require all employees to receive LEEDs training. Staff was, staff did support the, the conditions of approval at the time of approval with Plan Commission. However, staff does support the applicant's request to revise those conditions at this time, due to the zoning code, which does allow the decision-making body to waive those requirements for LEEDs training. Staff also requests several minor revisions to the language in the resolution, and I have copies of that resolution for you at this time. First, on page one, the date would be changed to today's date for the public hearing for City Council. Just a minor language error. And also on page three, the hours of operation and the findings were changed from 12:00 noon to 9:00 PM, which is consistent with the approved conditions from the Planning Commission, rather than from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And those are the only changes from the staff report that was submitted.
What was the last change in the time?
From 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM, which was changed during the Plan Commission.
Senator B. on page three of seven.
Okay. Are there any questions at this time?
Oh.
Councilwoman Daigle?
On the, on the pouring requirement, so what the applicant's asking for is, is some relief that, let's say there was a wine merchant from France that wanted to pour some of their wine, and they're not trained in LEEDs, the market would have the flexibility for that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
But that there would be a LEEDs-trained employee there-
Supervised.
At all times.
Okay. So, supervisor LEEDs, but don't have to both have LEEDs training?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Is the appellant present?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Beth Abalatia with Hinman and Carmichael. I'm here representing Vons this evening. I think the overall project is fairly well-described in the initial staff report to Planning Commission, and in the staff report that was prepared for you tonight. Vons is proposing to have a small area in its wine department that it will use for tasting events. The area will be segregated, separated by a permanent decorative barrier. There will be no one under 21 allowed in that area at any time, even while tastings are not taking place. The Planning Commission did approve the project with a number of conditions intended to restrict the operations and make sure that they were contained to true wine tasting. There's a limit on hours, a limit on the size of pours to no more than two ounces, LEED training requirements, employee supervision requirements, the requirement that the area be under video camera surveillance at all times, and other conditions intended to monitor the operations. There's only two conditions that we're raising with you this evening. One of them is essentially a housekeeping matter, to, a request to revise the language of condition number 10 slightly to clarify the intent of the condition. That's not a substantive change. The one substantive condition that we're asking the council to review is condition number nine, which was referred to in the staff report. And there are two components that we're asking the council to consider. Condition number nine, as it was approved by the Planning Commission, requires that all persons be ABC LEED-trained. ABC LEED training is a, an alcohol sales training program that the ABC puts on, on a monthly or every-two-month schedule. It's about four hours. And as the condition is presently worded, we would have to require visiting winemakers or importers who want to come and do tastings of their products to be LEED-trained, in addition to Vons' own employees. That would effectively preclude us from being able to bring in visiting winemakers to do tastings, because winemakers and importers, suppliers at that level, just don't take the ABC LEED training program. It's a program intended for retail suppliers of alcoholic beverages, clerks, and bartenders. So, as a practical matter, it, it doesn't apply to winemakers and importers and suppliers at that level. So, we are asking that, that can, that portion of the condition be removed. We have no objection to having Vons' employees who are pouring be LEED-trained, or having a Vons' LEED-trained employee present supervising a winemaker tasting. But we would ask that the requirement for LEED-training for suppliers be removed. I'll also add that I've looked at every other permit that the city has issued for this similar combination of licenses, a small tasting license within a larger retail store, and I've looked at all of those since the city's alcohol ordinance was adopted in 1998, and not one of those permits requires the supplier to be LEED-trained. It does require employees who are serving to be LEED-trained, but not suppliers. So, this condition for Vons is a deviation from all of the permits that have previously been approved. The second aspect of the condition that we're asking be changed is the requirement that there be at least two Vons' employees present during tastings. It's actually a very small area that will be used for tasting. The area where the customers will be tasting is only about 100 square feet, and we think that having one Vons' employee present and supervising a wine tasting is sufficient to conduct the tastings without compromising the security or the safety of the operations. And again, there's been no other permit of, similar permit that has included a condition for a minimum number of employees at all, much less two. So, we're asking that that be changed to require just one Vons' employee supervising the tastings. The planning staff has supported the request for these changes. The police department has no concerns, and so we're asking the city council to adopt the Planning Commission's decision with the changes referenced in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, council?
Yeah, I have one. This revised condition number nine doesn't say suppliers, though. Do you have a, would you have a problem with us limiting the non-LEED certified servers to, let's say, employees of the company whose product is being tasted? Employees or agents of the company? Let's, I mean, they probably contract out, I would imagine.
Of the supplier companies?
Of the product that's being tasted.
Well, that, that would be the issue. If, if somebody, if a winemaker or an importer is coming in to conduct a tasting of the products that they distribute, they would not be LEED-trained.
No, I understand. Would you have, this, the way this condition is worded, it just says anybody basically can serve, as long as they're being overseen by a LEED-certified employee. I'm saying that I'd like to just carve out the exception that you really need, and that's for suppliers to not have to be LEED-certified. It doesn't-
It does say, "All store employees serving alcohol shall be LEED-trained."
I understand, ma'am, but it doesn't, it, it says they'll be LEED-trained, and anybody, as long, anybody else can serve, as long as an employee is LEED-trained. Is that your understanding of it? It doesn't limit it to suppliers, as I'm reading it.
The only people that could serve would be store employees who have to be LEED-trained, or visiting suppliers.
I know, but the, am I, city attorney, am I reading this wrong? Does it limit it to suppliers?
I think, I'm wondering, are you looking at the new condition that has been proposed?
Are you talking about the one that was just handed out? No, I'm looking at the one on the book.
Yeah, the one on the book is, is the one that they're asking to change. The, if you look at condition number nine and what was just handed out, that's the proposed new language, and that does, I think, what you're suggesting.
No, I don't think it does. I think it's the same one as, that's, well-
"All store employees serving alcohol shall be LEED-programmed trained."
Okay, I have no problem with that.
Okay. And then it says, "Under the supervi-" And then it says, "Under the supervision of a wine steward, store manager, department manager. In addition, the wine steward, store manager, and department manager should also be trained." It doesn't say anything about suppliers.
There is no...
That's what I'm saying. So what she's asking for is to say, "I want to allow my suppliers to come in to serve the customer," correctly? I mean, am I correct?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Leepo, maybe you can clarify this.
Mr. Mayor, if I can help this. I understand what Councilmember Rosansky's saying, and I just asked Beth what her understanding is. It's only store employees and suppliers, so suppliers would be the only ones we could say, uh, all-store employees can have a lead training, and the only other per- people that may serve would be suppliers. Is that the correct term? Would that cover?
Well, I, I would call it employees of the, of the company whose product you're serving, or maybe their agent or something like that.
Yeah, I understand your question, that's why I'm asking Beth if there's anybody other than suppliers who would be pouring.
There is not.
Okay. What, what I'm trying to get around is, you know, you have just people you hire on a, let's say, a daily basis to come in and serve. They don't work for the supplier, but they're serving it, and they're not lead-trained.
Well, if, if they're not, if they're not working for the supplier, then they can't come in and do it, so...
Well, they can under this condition. I'm just trying to limit that.
Okay.
Okay, that's where I'm trying to get at. Thank you.
That's as a matter of the ABC laws.
Okay, well, I, I don't know about the ABC laws. That's not in my condition here, or our condition here.
I got to change that.
Yeah, so you have no problem with that?
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, what I'm going to suggest is that after the first sentence, the first sentence that ends with department manager, we would insert, "Only store employees and representatives of suppliers, wine suppliers, may serve wine at wine tasting."
Yeah, well, she may not want wine because apparently it allows beer tasting.
Yeah, I see. You're right.
I'm sorry. Okay, so only, uh, store employees and representatives of beverage suppliers may serve beverages at tastings.
Yeah, actually, I was going to get to something else here. I, we're, I, 'cause I didn't see a condition that prevents the public from serving themselves. Is that another ABC rule that's just not incorporated into here? Because I wouldn't want a bunch of bottles lined up where people are just going to start pouring their own little taste.
No, the ABC does take care of that, that.
That's a no-no?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Those two ounces could add up.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in this item? Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the hearing, bring it back to Council. Councilman Gardner?
I move that we, uh, adopt the appeal language with the changes that were just suggested by Mr. Leepo.
Second.
Okay, discussion, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, now can we do ARI?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. So nice of you.
The revolt is over, Mr. Mayor.
The palace coup, it's done.
Can't we do the trash contract? No?
Okay, Rosansky, that's it. All right, ARI, um, here are the, the procedures we're going to follow this evening. Um, going to do a little bit different. Because of the complexity of this project, we're going to allow the applicant to make a presentation first so we can get, uh, a good perspective of the, of the project. Questions of the applicant, uh, by the council will be permitted at that time. Then the staff will follow up and fill in with any additional information that is necessary. Then we'll open to public comments. Um, because of the amount of items we have on the agenda and the number of people that want to speak, we're going to be limiting public comments tonight to three minutes. And, um, the, uh, at the end of three minutes, the, um, a, a little bell will come on to remind you that your three minutes has expired. And after public comments are concluded, the applicant will have a chance to, uh, rebut any information that was presented, and then the council will discuss the project at the close of the public hearing. So with that, I'm going to invite the applicant forward to, uh, begin his presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Brian Jeanette. I'm the architect on the project. With me tonight also are a few of our consultants, Sid Neblet, soils engineer, Randy Mason from URS concerning the docks, uh, Tim Payon, who's a legal counsel, and Rick Julian, who is the, uh, the owner of the property. And as soon as Jim can fire up the... My comments tonight will generally follow the briefing book that I had, uh, sent to the council members, uh, earlier this week, with some changes. There have been, shall we say, a lot of discussions, uh, that have ensued in the last few days, and so I've tried to address my presentation in such a way that we touch on some of those issues as well.
In August, uh, August fourteenth oh seven, the, we came to the council after the Planning Commission had approved the project. The council had some concerns with the elevations at which the, the project had descended the slope, and what we have done since then is to take that advice seriously and try to link it up with other issues that we felt were important to, to combine, uh, into a project we think is, is even better and was approved by the Planning Commission, uh, not just recently. So originally, the project was designed at the, we all know the PLOED, the prod- predominant line of existing development, elevation thirty. The City Council suggested we go to fifty point seven. We actually have redesigned it up to elevation fifty-two point eight-three. That is the bottom of the structure that would be cannibalizing any decks, so we're a little more than a couple of feet higher than, than even what the council was suggesting. It meant a reduction of ten thousand five hundred, almost six hundred square feet. We lost a unit, we're now eight units. There are now four visible levels from, from the, uh, the bay versus six. We also reduced it by seventy-one hundred cubic yards. Uh, back in the earlier presentations, I think it was important to note that Spawn had actually written a letter of development. It is item number D twenty-nine of your staff report, stating that elevation fifty-two was really a very important point for them, and we felt that, I felt that that was something we should really work with. Also a letter by a, a member of the community, which I think many of us know very well, Laura Kern, had also indicated the line of development at fifty-two feet and preservation of the bluff face would balance the development and the public interest in the natural scenic bluffs. That was in your staff report, uh, page D, that, D point thirty-five. So in conjunction with this, uh, the project, we, again, reached further than that. What we did in the reduction is we increased the view corridor at the corner of Carnation and Ocean to the jetty by seventy-six percent. Went from a twenty-five degree view cone to forty-four degrees. I also took the building in height down from a four to six feet additionally. We enhanced the parking circulation by increasing the street width, or the, the drive widths inside, as well as we, we put all the required parking spaces for guests on the upper level so that anyone visiting would drive in from the street and exit right from the street. Although we do, we are overparked, parking requirement is eighteen spaces, we have thirty-one, and so we have guest spaces that are also, uh, in the other levels of the parking area. We have two vehicular elevators, one has been designated as an in, the other as an out, so you're always driving directly in front with, that is, you're driving with your vehicle, so you're watching the road in front of you. You don't have to back up at all. Uh, and then there was a question concerning the driveway, which we, it did increase to twenty feet. As part of the program, it was brought to the light that the dock proposal should be part of the program, and so tonight we bring to you the mitigated negative declaration that was approved by the Planning Commission, which also addressed the docks, not the plan, et cetera, of the docks themselves, but at least the mitigated negative declaration. So next slide. So what you see here is the building, the yellow, sort of yellowish color, was the building that we brought to the council originally. This was the original lower elevation, which was elevation thirty. It was moved up to fifty, line established by the council, and ultimately we moved it to fifty-two point eight-three. Then I brought down portions of the, the, the building itself, and then we've introduced the landscaping to the point where we really are looking to break it up into smaller elements. And there's an eighteen-foot setback between these two portions of the building. Next. The two side elevations were also substantially brought up as well as brought down. Next. These slides actually show the renderings without the other colors on them, so this is now really what the building will look like from the bay as well as from Carnation and Ocean. This is the view corridor that increased to the point where I think it's, it's been a substantial advantage to the public. Next slide. The trees that we're talking about is a coast beefwood, and this is what they look like. They can be laced out very nicely so that it does give a lot of vertical scale. Uh, the building itself, uh, or, excuse me, the trees themselves can grow up to about seventy, sixty to seventy feet. Uh, it'll be important, as conversations I've had with some of the council, to make sure that those strategically located trees are not pruned to the point where you, they don't have the benefit, which we intend to do in the CCNRs. And the palm tree that we're using, the San Jose hesper palm, is a drought-resistant palm that is located also in strategic location. It can be up to fifty feet tall. Next. So what I'd like to do is kind of take you through the neighborhood. Many of you have been there, and I know Don has probably walked it more than most of us, but sometimes we forget about the fact that this is complete, this was completely what used to be an R-three zone, which was then updated to the MFR zone. So this is all multifamily housing, and then residential R-two zone in the center of the area, the exception of the R-ones located in this section right here, which happens to be adjacent to the site. So I'm going to go through these pretty quickly. This is down Seaview, three stories of building. Next. This is down Carnation, Seaview over here. So these are projects that are recently approved by the council. Next. These are three stories of structures on Carnation on the inland side. This is one-story, two-story, and some three-story on the oceanward or the bayward side. This is looking up toward, uh, the end of Carnation. These all have a height limit, legal height limit of twenty-eight to thirty-two feet, and without any discretionary action, they can build a building based on that height. There are a lot of older buildings, and you can see some are trying to be sold and redeveloped.
Brian, Brian, your arrows there, though, are not meant to represent what the height could be.
No, no. Although some of may, but this next slide might give you a little bit of a, well, not this one, but I'll show you in a second, but no, they are not representing the heights of the buildings. Something that is an issue that we see all along Carnation and Ocean is everybody backs out to the street. And so what we're trying to do is not have this garage front yard, uh, without any landscaping as the view that we're looking at. Next. In this particular case, there's a small driveway with the, uh, an exit entry point for the vehicles on this particular house, which has underground parking, and this is more the scenery we're trying to establish. Next slide. This is the view. This is the single R-one, uh, lot or parcels within this whole area of MFR and R-two. And this is the height that would be allowed, uh, descending with the street based on the twenty, uh, twenty-eight to thirty-two foot height on it. Next. Across the street from the site, three stories, three stories at the corner. Next. This is looking up the street, three stories. And now I look down toward Ocean, and interestingly enough, if you take six of these homes, put them together as they are, and we'll look at this volumetrically, you have what more, actually very close to the same development that we have on ARI. It's actually a little bit less than that. Next slide. Uh, okay, now I want to go to the bay and talk about the views from the bay. And in this case, I'm taking from Channel Reef to Pacific Drive, and this is the site right here, from this point to this point. Next. This is what you see on the Pacific side, primarily four-level buildings. Some go from Pacific down to Bayside Drive. Next slide. On Bayside Drive, you see three and four-level buildings. Next. Four-level buildings on Bay, Bayside Place. This, this is one that we just saw the photo of, and ARI is also four-level building from the, from the bay. Next. Quickly here, this is the existing building in blue. This is the second floor level of the, the ARI project. There actually are two buildings with an eighteen-foot setback between the two, and this is the view corridor that was increased. So the view for the pedestrians enjoying the bay will have seventy-six percent increase in what the view was. Next. This actually shows slides of what that view represents with the, the new building in this location. These are just some examples of projects without discretionary action that you can come to the city, get a building permit, and go build. This is a building that's been in construction right now in Shortcliffs with a subterranean basement, and this is what you see from the upper, uh, the rendering of it. Next. This is a project where the bluff was left intact, grading was done behind it, no city review process except a building permit. Similar situation in a little bit south, southerly neighbor in Laguna Beach where subterranean basements protected the bluff, and that was the, the concern. Next. Bless you. This is the bluff, bless you. This is the bluff that we've, we're protecting, and I think what's important about this slide is, this is the elevation right at this walkway here that's fifty-three point three-three. My elevation of the first floor is fifty-three point five, so we're right close to that. The fifty-point-seven line is a little bit below that, but we've gone up to this level. Next. So what we're protecting, and what does need some adjustment to make it look right, is to take the concrete that's there, the plumbing, the electrical, and all of this stuff that really doesn't belong there, and re-vegetate it properly, and that is part of what we're proposing. We don't think this is appropriate nor enhancing of the, of the project wood bluff. Next. 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 Now the meaty stuff. Uh, I was asked at the last hearing to, to look at the volumetric relationship of the existing building, which is shown in blue, and then how the ARI project at that August fourteenth hearing was in an additive fashion, as well as the portions that went down the bluff. So we submitted it to the council in three ABC sections. I was asked to, in a sense, drape a net over the top of the building and kind of fill in all the holes so that we sort of look at it in a different volumetric manner. So we did both calculations, but in order to get these to be apples and apples, I needed to add back in the courtyard and the portions of the decks that we had not added before. The net result is, we ended up with four hundred eighty-two thousand seven hundred cubic feet in this August fourteenth oh seven relationship to what is now three hundred eighty-three thousand cubic feet, or twenty-one percent reduction in mass. Next. We went further than that. I decided that we should look this, at the four buildings to the north of us, which are a hundred and seventy feet in length, area's a hundred and fifty-eight feet in length. That's four hundred eighty-three thousand, almost four hundred eighty-four thousand cubic feet that you'll see in further pictures. And I took a six, six lots and said, "How many square feet would you typically see in any development in the R-two with, in, in this area?" And that's four hundred nineteen square feet, so we're even less than that at three eighty-three. This also represents the length of the buildings you would see in looking, uh, from the bay toward the southeast. Next. This was just an analysis of some of the things that were pulled back. The green line in this case was the, the line established by the council at fifty-point-seven, and we're behind it, and you can see its relationship to the, the blue line, which is the building that, uh, is there today. Next. This is the building as it's overlaid over the, the new building over the existing, so we're very close to, to what is there today. Next. This is at the fourth level, which is pulled back, in some cases quite substantial, from the fifty-point-seven line. Next. This is the view from the bay, showing the ARI project now in its location, and again, to further understand the massing of this, I took this and dropped it into the next four buildings, and you can see we are smaller in width as well as in volume than the four buildings adjacent to us. We also took a look at the widths of the buildings, the Channel Reef at two hundred fifty feet, the Vallejo home, which is a hundred and fifty feet of length, ARI, which is a hundred and fifty-eight feet, a hundred and seventy feet for the four homes adjacent, and so on and so forth. This is the fifty-point-seven line, again, that we're a little bit above that. Next slide. Now we're looking at the slide again closer to Bayside Drive, looking at the relationship of us to the homes adjacent to the north and the Vallejos, uh, Macintosh property, excuse me, and then with our project inserted in it. Next slide. This is the project, and this is what we're hoping that the council, uh, tonight can see to, to allow us to move forward. Now, I also had some, I have some slides up here that I would... Now, I also had some, I have some slides up here that I would ask if you'd like me to show them, I can. One has to do with the docks and some input on that, as well as I have other information that have to do with the access way from the site to the, to the dock area below. And so I have additional and plans.
Well, I think, I think you should go ahead and show that since that's part of the mitigated negative declaration.
Okay. We were asked recently to analyze the dock system relative to the, the channel inlet, and so the black lines that you see here represent the dock area of the proposed docks. And you can see how there are others presently in the, in the area. Next. This is, this is it right now as it stands today. This next slide shows it when the new docks and gangway are in place. Next slide. Randy Mason from URS had done analysis of the, this looks like Ontario Speedway. These are actually fifty-foot lanes for ten boats. I'm not sure which way they're going. They don't typically all go in one direction, but it shows that the five hundred foot navigation channel is, is to the west of where the proposed docks are for the Erie site, which are over here. The channel at this point is closer to six hundred feet wide. Next. This shows a little closer view to that, the pierhead line and the bulk head, uh, pierhead line and the bulk headline, and we're just inside that. It's harder to see in this slide, but it'll become easier in just a second. Next slide. This is the actual dock layout with the boats and the side tight guests over here. Next. I also did an analysis from, a shading analysis to see if we're shading any of the eel grass that is there presently. And obviously, the sun is in the southern hemisphere, and if you're on the dock over here, we're shading toward the northerly side of the docks, not the southerly side. So there's no shading at all on the, on the present eel grass. The docks were actually designed and adjusted to stay clear of the eel grass. Next slide. And I think that precludes my comments unless you have others that I can help.
Okay. I'd just like to make one statement at this time, and that is that in regard to the, the marina and the dock system, that we are only looking at the mitigated negative declaration tonight. We're not approving that as part of the project. We're just looking that the environmental document is, is sufficient. Any questions, Mr. Jeanette, Councilman Gardner?
Before I launch into anything else? Just, you have the slide up there at the very end, the emergency exit, and I, as I read all the materials, I kept wondering, why is there an emergency exit?
From the, from the, kind of, call it the, where the, the pool and spa area is, the first basement? It's an exit to get to the docks, as well as it's one of the required exits from the building department for exiting of the building. The lower docks that are down at the beach are actually defined as a refuge, refuge area for people who would exit the building in case of fire. And I have pictures of a model that we did of that, if you'd like to see that. Okay.
Councilman Rosansky?
Yes, actually, I would like to see those pictures because it, at what, what level or what height does that exit?
That exit out, exits out at elevation forty.
So it is below the line of, prominent line of development?
Yes, it is.
So I would like to see those. I'd also like to understand a little bit better, because one of the things that I mentioned last time we saw this was the, the parking issue, the ingress and egress, and you did make many changes along those lines with the guest parking on the first floor, which I'm glad you did, and the fact that you're overparked. My concern is still the queuing at the garage, waiting for the elevator to open, I guess, or so that they can enter. And what's the length of, I guess, the, you, you said the driveway was increased to twenty feet wide. I'm assuming that's as the sidewalk goes, not the depth of the driveway, or am I mistaken?
Uh, this is, the driveway is actually where the cars would be going in to park on the upper level, as opposed to the vehicular elevators.
Oh, I see. So you're not talking about the driveway, eight, eight, well, the driveway entering the parking garage, you're talking about the drive to get to the guest parking spaces?
Yeah, which is the, into the parking garage on the upper level.
Okay.
Each of the elevators have a ten-foot wide lane to get into their ten-foot wide elevators.
Okay. How deep is the lane?
The lane is...
Between the garage door and the sidewalk?
It's ten feet from the garage door to the sidewalk and approximately, you might, six or eight feet, or maybe even another ten feet to the curb.
Okay, so tell me how this is going to work. A car's going to come down Carnation, let's say, or Ocean, you can take your pick. What's going to happen?
Car's going to come in, pull into the space on the, uh, let's go to the elevation. Yeah. Right here. Next slide. There we go. Car would come into this elevator, and there's a keypad. At this point, they would punch in their number or use their remote. The door would open, and then they'd drive into it. It'd take, all the cars will be, all the elevators will be at the street level, for starters. So when they come to it, they open the door, they go in. Go down, it takes about a minute to get to their level, exit, and then come back. The elevator comes back up to street level.
Okay, so there's a potential of a car standing there, waiting for an elevator, or...
There could be. We talked to Tony, the traffic engineer, and he's, he said he was not worried about that at all. Most people back out of their driveways at this point, so having entry points like this, one in and one out, he was very comfortable with that. But you could have a couple of cars that potentially could stack up there.
Right. But I'm saying, virtually any car that's going to use this is going to be overhang, is blocking the sidewalk, let's say?
It, yes.
So for a pedestrian who's on the sidewalk, they're going to have to go out into the street to go around that car?
For that period of time, yes.
Okay. And if there's more than one car, let's say two people show up at the same time to enter this, the building, one car's waiting out in the street, and one car's in this driveway?
That potentially could happen, but the elevators that are going down are servicing seven units, so we're talking about a lot of people going to one unit at the same time. One of the, the parking spaces for one of the units is right at this level, so it's, it's actually these two elevators are serving two units, or seven units, excuse me. Now, if there's a demand and we, both of the elevators need to take people down at the same time, they have the ability to do that. So it would become a function of if all of a sudden...
But isn't one an in and one is an out? I thought that's what you said earlier.
One is in and one is out, but they can both serve the same function also. They'll be marked as though you entered this one and you exit this one.
Right. So you're not going to, no one's going to go to their unit on the left elevator?
Unless it's a police or emergency or something like that.
I'm talking about a resident or a guest. So everybody's going to enter the building and travel up and down on the elevator on the right?
Correct.
And when they exit the building, they're going to come up the elevator on the left?
Yes.
Okay. So there's only really one elevator to allow people to enter the building, not two?
Yes.
Is that accurate? Okay, I just want to understand that, how that parking situation's going to work. All right, and the pictures of the...
Of the...
Emergency exit?
Entry exit, number one. It's loading. Presently, the stairs that exist come up and take this jagged kind of turn. At this location, they're at elevation forty-four or forty-eight, and this is where they, they continue to come up this way. This line right here is the fifty point seven line. And so what we're doing is we come up the stairs, and at this landing, we go flat. And so this becomes a slot, so to speak. You come in and then step down to the elevation of the deck or the floor at this level, which is forty point four two. And so this is the rock mass that will, is staying there, and then we're adding rock on this side to mimic the rock that's there today. This is a model that we did showing the stairs coming up, so that rock will stay as it is. And then this is added over here, and you come in at this point and turn underneath. Next. And the door actually to the lower level is around the corner over here. So what we've done is we're going to match, this exists, this is new up here.
That's fake. That's fake rock.
Yes, correct. This, this section is fake rock. This is existing rock. This is fake rock behind the fifty point seven line, and this is existing rock. And then this is the cantling or the deck above it. So it's really not a tunnel per se, although the space is, the rock does not go over the top of it.
The pictures that you showed earlier, you showed probably, I don't know, half a dozen or a dozen pictures of other projects that had subterranean basements or spaces?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah. Did any of them have a, a situation where you could exit from those subterranean areas without exiting through the building?
Yes. One in particular, the Portavella has that.
And it has fake rocks, too.
It does have fake rocks. But they look pretty good.
You did some good casting.
There were no predominant line of development issues, though, with that project at that time?
At that time, it was really a building setback established by the string line concept.
Right. So that this, that was not approved under this type of a way to analyze the project?
No, but I don't think any in the, anything in the current CLUP would prohibit that at this point either.
Thank you. Councilman Gardner?
Is this when we get into the, my questions about the mitigated negative declaration? Okay. I have two areas of concern. One is the aesthetics and one is biological resources. The aesthetics, just for those of you out here, I think like most of the council people here, I have met with the proponents, I have met with the opponents, I've spent a lot of time talking about it. I wish I had the visceral, immediate reaction that some of you have, so I just knew exactly what the answer was. Instead, I've had to read and read, and sometimes I come across something later, after several readings, that I didn't think about before, and that's one of these things, which is we have focused so much on the, the bluff part as the view. But when I was looking at the docks, the new proposed docks, to me, the view, and I don't know why I didn't pick up on the fact that there was going to be a marina here. I, as I went back, I saw there was a, a line about that in an earlier report, but I guess I was just thinking of the, the former dock and what that was like. From the water to me, when I have gone up there paddling, the rocky formations of the cove itself are as much a part of the scenic view as the bluff. And this, this is not addressed at all in the mitigated negative declaration. And to me, that, the proposed marina and those boats there are going to obliterate that particular view. So that is one of my concerns. My second concern is that I'm not sure that we have adequately addressed the whole issue of the biological resources. I appreciate the, the fact that we have looked at the eel grass. We know that's a concern of the whole bay, and we certainly don't want to lose any. But if you look at the language in the mitigated negative declaration describing this cove, a rare marine relic that no longer exists in other areas of the bay, sensitive habitat, protection to conserve and protect, those are our policies, and I am concerned with the whole issue of, they talked about a variety of fauna and marine fauna and flora that are in this cove, and will we be protecting this very rare relic with the marina proposed? And I don't think, again, that we have adequately addressed that, and I don't know who answers that question for me, whether the proponent does or staff does, but those are two big concerns I have, and the one I know has not been addressed at all.
Well, I think staff can address that unless you have something to add to it, Mr. Jeanette.
I, I think I would like to hear from staff, but I think it is important to note, there's a lot of information that has been going on concerning the, the eel grass, its location. We've had Rick Ware, who's been down there just recently, who was in there January and again in May.
No, you've addressed the, the...
Just to really make sure we knew what was going on.
You've addressed the eel grass, but the, the declaration starts talking about this cove, and it's a lot more than eel grass, the sand dollars and the variety of habitat, it's such a unique habitat, that I got the sense from it that there's a, sort of a unique combination of, of factors there that we are not able to duplicate, and I'm not, I'm concerned that we would provide adequate protection when we go in and put in a fairly large marina for, in comparison to what's there now.
And I actually agree with you. That is sensitive, and, and we're staying off of that, but maybe it would be easier to let the staff or possibly Keaton Kreiser, who is here, maybe address that.
Okay. Okay, well, let's get, let's hold off on that for a moment. Any other questions, Mr. Jeanette, Council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I did have one other question. Did you, I thought you said you had a slide regarding the visual of the, from the water of the dock?
Yes.
But you could have missed it. Well, I was looking for it, and so...
That's the dock.
So you've got a simulation of the new dock?
Yes.
Show me that again.
We did this in, this, yeah, there are no boats. We've been asked to do this without boats because boats are like cars in parking lots. They're transient.
Who, who asked you to do it without boats?
Uh, the, your attorney, your city attorney.
Oh, she says she didn't.
Nope, okay, maybe I misstated it.
Well, maybe staff can at least answer. Is that the way you're supposed to do these things, without the boats, or...
Well, the, the point that, that can be made is that the boats are transient, so they come and go. But if this is a docking, permanent docking of boats, and if the issue is the evaluation of the impact of the dock and the boats on this resource, and if, I, I think that it might be appropriate to have an understanding, at least an explanation for the council to understand the impact of those boats, whether they come and go or not, and for how long they might be there. I think...
Well, I, I think it might be worthwhile to have an evaluation of that point anyway.
Exactly, that's my point.
And perhaps an additional simulation that shows what it looks like when there's boats there.
This is the Macintosh Channel Reef, and so I guess we could superimpose some boats in there. But the bluff behind it is, and the, the water line on the, on the docks is eighteen inches off the water, with the exception of the, of the piles. Scoot it over a little bit.
But a boat of the size of, you know, those docks is going to be ten, twelve, fifteen feet above the water, maybe more?
I guess, yeah. This is the entrance way, and the, and the rock actually begins at this point and ascends up here, and then there's a low spot in here, which is where the gangway goes, and then it continues up to elevation thirty over here. I guess if you put boats in any dock, it's going to obscure the view beyond it. But that was, I believe, Councilman Hen, that's, that's the new gangway drawn in, and the simulation of the, the docks themselves.
Any other questions, Mr. Jeanette? Okay, seeing no one.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. If you can go back, Brian, to your, the one with the twenty-one percent reduction, and you showed your roof planes and all that?
Right here.
Right, and I used to do plan check even, I've seen some of your projects, and I'm curious, how do you, how do you determine your height limit there in terms of their
This is like a section through the building, and the height limit is actually, it's a twenty-eight to thirty-three foot height limit, which in this case means that the, the roof average would be the twenty-eight feet, and the maximum height, it could pitch up to or roll up to the thirty-three feet, five feet beyond the, the twenty-eight foot. With the use permit, you could go higher. But in this case, we're working with the twenty-eight foot height limit as the roof average height. So these represent sort of an assemblage of roofs that are similar, but not necessarily at that particular spot.
Okay, so within your roof plane, would it then include that, too, as well, as the roof, as the roof slopes down?
Yes. Actually, as the roof slopes downward, until it hits this...
So these represent sort of an assemblage of roofs that are similar, but not necessarily at that particular spot.
Okay, so within your roof plane, would it then include that too as well, as the roof, as the roof slopes down?
Yes, actually, as the roof slopes downward, until it hits this, you could utilize that roof average point from here to, to the point where you can't continue past the, the envelope itself, or a setback if it were a side yard.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad you went back to that slide, because it prompted a question I was thinking of. You, you show a twenty-one percent reduction in the volumetric calculation. Do you have a volumetric calculation for the existing buildings, so as a comparison also?
Yes, that, Commissioner-
Oh, I see, thanks, okay.
Exactly. So there's presently two hundred and four thousand eight hundred ninety-six cubic feet in the building that's there.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Campbell. You'd give us a summary of the, the application and any other pertinent information you think was missed in the presentation, as well as maybe addressing the two items that Councilwoman Gardner brought up on the mitigated negative declaration?
Certainly. First, I'll go over the application itself. We have before the council a general plan amendment, a coastal land use plan amendment, and a zone change, and we're really talking about a four hundred, five hundred and eighty-four square foot piece of property that is actually presently owned, assembled as part of one oh one Bayside Place, and that's a portion of the bluff area that would be adjusted to the project site. It's presently zoned for two-family residential, not multifamily residential, so that's the legislative portion of the application, is to change the designations and zoning to be consistent with the larger portion of the project site, which is multifamily residential. We've got a subdivision map here, basically assembling these properties, and then it would subdivide the building that you see here in the plans into eight airspace condominiums. So we've got findings to make with respect to the subdivision map act and the city subdivision ordinance. We also have a modification permit request for above-grade and subterranean encroachments within the required setbacks. I can go a little more in depth in each one of those if you would like, but we have subterranean encroachments in the ten-foot front yard setback along Carnation. A guardrail, a forty-two inch guardrail in the front yard along Carnation, and that's there to protect folks who are on the sidewalk from falling over a proposed retaining wall that would be in the front, within the front yard. We've got side yard encroachments between the project site and two fifteen Carnation. These again are subterranean encroachments that won't be visible, and above-grade encroachments primarily are, these are decks and platforms in the side yard that are not allowed to be over six feet in height. So there are a number of encroachments there. There's also some decks and balconies on the backside of the building above Bayside Place, again, are approaching to that side yard setback. The last application for the city, this evening, is what's called a coastal residential development permit application, and this is a process to implement the Mellow Act, which basically requires replacement of affordable units that are lost through demolition. There are no affordable units here this evening in the project site, and so there really is no replacement requirement. In summary, we do believe the findings pursuant to the various applications are, can be made, and we do have a draft resolution for the council's consideration in the staff report, which contain the facts to support those various findings. I can go into more depth on any of those issues if you might like. Okay? And moving on to the two issues at hand, I guess we have visual resources of the docks, and that, that's impact on that area, and then a biological issue is indicated. We do have Keaton Kreiser here this evening, who can also address and maybe augment some of my comments, and I might turn it over to Keaton here momentarily. But we do have a marine biological assessment within the mitigated negative declaration, with a variety of plant and animal communities. We do have mitigation measures that would hopefully avoid and minimize any impacts to the marine environment. And I think Keaton can assist us in filling in that gap, and we can talk about, why don't we do that now, and then we can talk about the visual issue.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Keaton Kreiser, I'm the primary author of the environmental document. And again, as Mr. Campbell said, Rick Ware was the biologist, the marine biologist that conducted the biological surveys. There were prior studies done by P and D in two thousand and five, all those were, were utilized in the, in the preparation of the document. Mr. Ware looked at not only eelgrass, but also other marine habitat and wildlife, including the California garibaldi, which is a state fish. He looked at sea turtles, he looked at sea lions, and a, and a variety of different marine sea life, none of which, with the exception of the sand dollar in the tidal flat area, in the sandy area, did he identify as having a potential impact. There, there are two mitigation measures in the document that address the, the sand dollar. One is that during construction, that the construction personnel and equipment would avoid those areas that would most likely potentially affect the sand dollar, which is identified as, as a rare type of resource, given the, the nature of development that's taken place that has made this area sort of a remnant. And the other mitigation is to make sure that the residents that reside in the development would be made well aware of the sensitivity of that resource, the sand dollar, and, and the sensitivity of that cove to ensure their, to protect that resource. But the, the biological survey looked at both terrestrial and marine, and concluded that with the, with the exception of eelgrass and the, the cove and the, the sand dollar, there, there were no significant impacts, and mitigation had been identified for both the eelgrass and the sand dollar.
I don't know much about sand dollars, I just remember that we had a lot of them at one time. How sensitive are they in terms of sand, sediment transport, and that sort of thing?
In terms of, the, the document also addressed the sediment transport, and I believe the conclusion was that the transport is in, is, that will not affect the, the sand dollar based on the current, and there may be somebody from the, the engineering team that has a better sense of that, but the conclusion, I believe, was, and it's documented in, in the negative declaration, that the sand transport would not have an effect on the sand dollar. And that is, I, I can pull that reference.
Yeah, because I remember reading quite a bit about the eelgrass, and I, but I didn't see, I didn't get the understanding from the way it was phrased, that we were also protecting sand dollars. So I didn't know if they were more sensitive to the sediment transport, which, we will have a change in that, when you, you can't help but have something like that when you-
And that was characterized, but there was a transport study that was done that concluded that there wouldn't be, there would be no significant impacts relative to that sand transport, and that went further to look at the sand dollar as well.
But that there would be some local changes?
Some local changes, but not significant. So in the end, there are mitigation, all those biological resources were addressed, terrestrial and marine, and mitigation were identified, not only for eelgrass, but for the sand, but also for the sand dollar as well, and that covey in particular. As it relates, if you wanted to talk about the, the visual impacts, again, I think the city attorney began to address those. I guess, from a seque standpoint, again, the dock is proposed to be about eighteen inches above the water line. When it's unoccupied, there would virtually be no appreciable effect on the views from the waterside, from the harbor, to those rocky outcroppings that, that create a, a visual amenity for those traveling through the channel. Again, when boats are in the slips, while there may be some blockage of views, as, as boats are entering or leaving the harbor in either direction, there are windows of opportunity where there might be momentary, maybe longer than momentary, blockages of those features. As they pass by those features and look through those windows, those rocky outcroppings will still be visible. So it's not as though they'll be entirely blocked from all locations, there will be some partial blockage as, as the boats are entering and leaving the harbor, as they pass the, the marina with boats in the marina. If there are no boats in the marina, there should be no adverse effect on that view.
With eight slips, I presume that they'll want to have eight boats, and the chances of them all being gone at the same time are probably not very great. But I'm also a little concerned, I would want to see some visuals, because we have, during the general plan process, we were very concerned about what we call view corridors, and that how insignificant most of them end up being, that you get this tiny glimpse of something as you're passing, and it doesn't really address the real view.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Kaiser?
Just to follow up on that for a moment, I, I guess, you know, it's very hard for me to visualize what the view corridors would be, and how large they would be. And so I, for one, would appreciate a series of simulations that might show what the view corridors would be from the water.
There are, I noticed there's some exhibits in here, and it, actually, if you, if you look, there are, there's an exhibit in the mitigated negative declaration, if you have that in front of you, I believe it's on page twenty-seven. Twenty-six and twenty-seven. We might be able to, to do it if, if they have those documents. On, on page twenty-six, you'll notice that between the, the marina to the north and the existing marina, there is that, that window, as boats pass, and there is similarly one to the, I guess that would be to the southeast. So again, as the boats are entering and leaving the harbor, they'll have those, those windows. Now, a simulation would, would certainly show that much better than a verbal description of it, but if, as, as you pass where the proposed marina is, you'll have that window of opportunity to view those, those features.
Well, I appreciate your verbal description, but I'm really bad at trying to visualize that kind of thing, based upon a verbal description.
Mayor Protem Deagle?
My question wasn't related to the marine element, so I'll wait till that passes.
Okay. Okay, Councilman Webb?
Are we starting into a process where we are going to be evaluating views both through boats, from the land side and ocean sides all over the bay, where we're going to, I think we're going down a pretty slippery slope here as far as, as looking at docks and saying, well, how many boats can we put on the dock? And, and if we're going to be looking at it from the bayside, we probably should look at it from the, the ocean side, and maybe we should review some of the docks over here on, on Lido Island.
No, because those aren't coastal bluffs, and what we are protecting from our general plan are coastal bluffs and that sort of thing. If it's a bay, we have no, no protections for a sandy beach or anything that were listed in our new general plan. But our new general plan has talked about protection of coastal, coastal bluffs, and rocky outcroppings are part of the local coastal use plan and that sort of thing. So to me, that was something that we hadn't considered, and I do see a real distinction between that and most of the bay, which is not protected in any way.
I'm a little concerned that we're looking and signaling out boats and, and docks and, that aren't attached to bluffs, and, but I'll listen further.
Okay, any, no, Creighton's sat down. Okay, any other, any other questions?
So you prepared the environmental?
I prepared the environmental, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Wanted to talk a little bit about the excavation. What's a ho ram?
I'm sorry?
What's a ho ram?
I couldn't tell you, that's a piece of construction equipment. The applicant could probably tell you what that is, I'm not familiar with it.
So it's probably not something that's quiet and demure, being called a ho ram?
Probably not.
Just a guess?
Probably not.
So what kind of noise, you know, so you're talking about some noise coming out of there? Okay, and then what about your traffic? You've got, what's the volume, concrete mixers, trucks a day?
I, I think the, the, the construction number, the number of construction vehicles, the heavy trucks coming in and out with, taking dirt off the site was, I want to say eighteen hundred or, there, there's a table, I believe it was about eighteen hundred trips overall to excavate the material and export it from the site.
Okay, so could you make a fair argument that there's traffic and noise impacts?
I, and I believe we've, we've said that there, there will be construction-related traffic impacts and, and noise impacts as well.
And then why wouldn't you do a full tilt EIR?
Because there are mitigation that we're saying alleviates those impacts or reduces them to a less than significant level. That, based on the noise study, based on the recommendations and the acoustical analysis, we didn't do a traffic study, but again, there isn't any traffic-related noise per se, except as it relates to the construction traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Mr. Campbell, do you have anything else to add as far as your staff report? I think we covered the visual there.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is Jennifer Friend here? Ms. Friend has requested some extra time to speak on behalf of a group of organized residents in opposition to the project, and I'm going to allow you, I think you asked for ten minutes, and I'm going to allow you that time with the understanding that it'll help keep down a lot of the repetitive testimony. Is, is that your intent?
Absolutely, Mayor, and I, I appreciate that. I actually have brought with me two consultants that will be making a visual presentation to yourself and the council as well, so that would be included within that time. My comments will be brief, and I will then defer to them.
Okay. Just be sure that everyone states their name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, my name is Jennifer Friend, I'm with the law firm of Selman Brightman, and I'm here this evening to represent the Vallejo and McIntosh families with respect to their opposition of the non-conforming project that has just been portrayed to the council, actually not once, but numerous times. As the council is aware, very substantive arguments have been made to establish that the project that is proposed is not in compliance with the city's own general plan. As the city knows, and the council members and mayor are aware, a lot of time, attention, and dedication has gone into the general plan, which was recently just afforded some accolades, congratulations on those. With that in mind, it goes to show how vitally important the maintaining of unique ecosystems, unique coastal systems, and unique formations, land formations are within the city of Newport Beach. This project does not minimize any alteration of coastal bluffs, does not in any way preserve the character or nature or continuity of the surrounding neighborhood, and in fact, has such substantial and significant, and as just conceded, a fair argument can in fact be made, and has been made, that the significant environmental impacts created by this proposal is requiring of an environmental impact report, which has not been done. I believe that some of the mitigation measures with respect to the sand dollars, with respect to the eelgrass, and some of the marine life ecosystem that will in fact be disturbed, and in some instances destroyed and/or damaged, the types of mitigation measures that we're looking at are things such as educating the public to not disturb the natural environment any more than necessary, or asking construction crew members to please not enter areas that are to be protected and preserved. I've been a construction lawyer for eleven years, and I, I value my construction client's judgment, but I can also tell the council that requesting construction crew to please not enter into an area that is going to be excavating over twenty-four thousand cubic yards of earth, and devising a sick structure, subterranean development, it's not going to happen. Those are not plausible mitigated measures that are sufficient enough to eliminate the need for an, an environmental impact report. This city council has the legal obligation to not grant the developer vested rights to develop a property that is not in conformance with its own general plan and its own land use documents. We, the reason why this project has gone back and forth and been redesigned and redesigned again, is because we are trying to fit a square in a circle. It does not work, this project is not conforming. It can be redesigned a million times, and it will ultimately still remain non-conforming, as long as they seek to destroy the coastal bluff, to eradicate a very unique relic area within our coastal view corridor and the ecosystem of the city of Newport Beach. The mass scale and visual presentation of this project are incompatible with the single-family and even multifamily residential projects that are in the surrounding area. An example of that is that the applicant had to put a net over four to six projects in order to show how the mass and scale of its proposed development will be compatible with the surrounding area. I would imagine that if I were trying to argue compatibility within the existing neighborhood, I would not want to try to aggregate or mass four to six structures in order to argue that the scale of my project is conforming with the neighborhood. that the scale of my project is conforming with the neighborhood. You have within each of those individual structures, a point of demarcation. You have different types of topography. You have different architectural features, and most importantly, you do not have a massive complex. So I would ask you when you're evaluating whether or not the applicant has shown you that his project is conforming with the nature and character of the neighborhood, does casting a net over four or six projects to amass them all together to show how it is that your project could conform? Does that, does that meet, does that meet the smell test? And I would argue that it clearly does not. This city council has articulated that the massive scale of this complex is not in the character of the surrounding neighborhood. I would argue that even though there has been some reduction in the proposed project, there hasn't been even anything allowing for the massive nature of this project to be scaled down because it can't be. Sequer requires an environmental impact report, be prepared with this project. I would anticipate that if Mr. Peown, the attorney for the applicant, is going to come up, he will probably articulate that I am merely espousing my own personal opinions and that I'm doing nothing more than coming up with conclusions as opposed to substantiating it with fact. And I would state that, that the mere concession by the author of the mitigated negative declaration, that a fair argument can in fact be made, that this will significantly impact the environment, is quite frankly, all that this council needs to know that an EIR is in fact required for this project. This project proposes to destroy forty-seven percent of the coastal bluff and we will show you in presentation how that is actually going to occur. The city again is, is commissioned with the preservation of all that is unique and valuable within this precious city of ours. As Councilmember Gardner pointed out, the MND is wrought with language, talking about and describing and discussing the unique ecosystem, the unique visual effect that this property has. To allow for this non-conforming structure, to allow for the maximization of the alteration of the coastal bluff through the establishment of the marina, as well as the eradication of the coastal bluff itself, is in no way to preserve, protect, or implement the general plan. And if it is the city's desire to be able to issue its own permit and not need the assistance of the coastal commission, I would argue that this would be a project to seriously consider what type of message it would be sending to the coastal commission. Again, the applicant has no vested rights to build this project. This project is violative of the city's own general plan and following this, I am going to be introducing Scott Porterfield of the Moo Group. Um, he's worked in the construction industry for over twenty-two years and been the responsible managing principal for several major projects, including the twenty-five million dollar Bluebird Canyon emergency landslide repair in Laguna Beach. David H. Lee is a California licensed geotechnical engineer who's performed numerous landslide evaluations and structural assessments for private and public agencies. And at this time, I would like to turn the podium over to Mr. Porterfield, who is going to show you how in fact it is that this proposed development in no way comports with the general plan.
Hello, my name's Scott Porterfield, I'm with the Moo Group. What we're going to show you today is, um, really just the size and mass of this one structure. This here is just a three-D image that represents the existing structure and the existing This slide here represents the excavation. Go back a little bit, Thomas. This here, my battery went out. This shows the depth, this about forty feet on the upper end there. Oh, here we go. Oh, thank you. This upper end here is about forty feet, um, in depth and you've got the vertical all the way around this perimeter. And go ahead and go through it, Thomas. This is the bluff side that you see in the darker color there that we expect that is going to fail. Um, you've got a vertical on the backside of that and there's just, it's very unlikely that this is going to stay in place when you come in here to drill piles and dig this earth away, that that's going to stay there. So we expect that this will, um, fracture or break down at least twenty feet and this here is what we expect, is going to be the access down to the marina area. And this is, uh, basically the proposed structure. It's not as, uh, pretty as the last slide you saw, but it shows the mass and, um, just overall size of the structure. This is an aerial of, uh, the existing, uh, structure and what we're going to show you is when we put this, um, proposed structure over, you can see how much larger it is and how unlike this structure is of the surrounding community. And in order to build this structure, this is this area of the bluff side that we expect to be destroyed as a result of the construction of the structure and access down to the marina. Um, get rid of the green, back one more time, Thomas. I think the previous slide showed this area here, there's some existing concrete that may have to be removed. Well, in order to remove that, you're going to have to get equipment in here and if they're going to reconstruct that slot, uh, face, you're going to have to build that from the base all the way up. So we really think that that forty-seven percent is conservative and it'll probably be more than that. This is the same, uh, this is just a different view, the proposed structure, and then the same, um, effect, the bluff, as a result of the construction of that concrete right there. This, this much of the, um, bluff we expect to be destroyed. Now this, uh, little red dot there, we just put, that's about the location of that, uh, emergency exit or tunnel. And, um, to build that, to build that, you know, you're, they're going to have to demo everything above that tunnel to, uh, construct that and then of course you can rebuild the bluff with concrete and it'll look a lot like a bluff, but the natural bluff side formation will be gone. This is another, uh, aerial view, which shows a couple things. It shows the, uh, proposed marina and how it, uh, compares to a couple of the existing docks. And there's several ways to construct a marina, but I, I understand that this could be constructed with up to twenty concrete piles or some type of pile that will need to be drilled and set into the ocean floor and, uh, so there certainly are going to be impacts to the, uh, existing environment and habitat in that area. Uh, again, the, the green lines show the impact to the bluff side and we expect that that'll probably extend down to here. You see a couple of the, uh, adjacent structures. We've got about thirty-four hundred square feet here, let's think this is five thousand, twenty-seven hundred, four thousand. This is, uh, completely unlike and completely unique to, to this community. It's, it's one structure, one, um, subterranean, uh, excavation that actually represents that whole footprint. This is a snapshot and I think you guys have a handout of this, of what an environmental impact report would include. Um, we've got on here, again, the, the bluff side would be destroyed by up to forty-seven percent and probably more than that. Substantial disturbance to the existing cove and habitat, eel grass and sand dollar bed as a result of those, uh, twenty, up to twenty piles that are going to be needed to be constructed for that marina. Uh, the demolition, which is going to have to happen anyway, but this type of information would be included in an EIR report, we expect to last up to two months and, uh, each day we're expecting that, uh, you would have at least fourteen, uh, truck trips per day over that time period, be six hundred to sixteen trips. Now, the excavation and export, excuse me, of the bluff side herb, we estimated going to the Braya landfill because they'll take earth for free. Bee Canyon is a lot closer, but they'll charge you about forty-six dollars per ton, which would cost you about over two million dollars just for them to accept the dirt. And dirt is a tricky commodity because, uh, depending on the timing, you, you don't really have a place you can take it unless you work out a, uh, make, make an arrangement with someone that actually needs it and on the, uh, this area on the coast is unlikely you're going to find that. There's twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty cubic yards, which equates to about a hundred and fifty-four truck trips per day. We, and, we, we estimated about seven hundred yards to be hauled off-site per day based on, uh, the limitations. And this excavation would happen probably over a six-month period with the shoring. They'll drive down your piles, let me go back to that photo. They'll drive down those piles, um, shoot your shot creek, set lagging, do your excavation, um, and you'll go back and forth until you get the hole dug. So, there'll be at least thirty-six point four days of actual haul time, which is fifty-six hundred and six truck trips. Equating this into miles, which an EIR report, uh, focuses on, would be forty-eight hundred and eleven miles per day, or over the whole excavation export would be a hundred and five thousand, a hundred and seventy-five thousand miles. An EIR report would also talk about the emissions that would, uh, be included in this, which would include noise and pollutants.
Scott, you're going to have to speed it up a little bit. I've already given you some extra time here.
Okay, I'm just about done, thanks. Uh, the construction, um, just for the subterranean would probably be another six months. The upper floors, which would probably be made out of wood, would be another six months. The finishing to the, uh, structure and site finish, up to ten months, maybe thirty months to complete this project, two and a half years. You notice the, um, existing street and how it's fractured, it probably has a pretty long lifespan for the existing type of traffic it's getting now. Well, with this type of traffic we're talking about, just for the subterranean excavation alone, will certainly shorten the life of, uh, the existing roads.
Mayor, Joe and Linda Martin have yielded their time to allow...
Uh, we don't, we don't do that, but I'm going to give Mr. Lee three minutes and then, uh, I'll have given you twenty-one minutes, so, more than twice what you asked for.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is David Lee.
You have three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I have performed a third-party review, uh, of the publicly available documents and those include, uh, documents that were, as, in the public record, provided to the city, uh, by the developer, that's all that was available to me, that included reports by Neblet and Associates, the geotechnical consultants, uh, plans by Hunsacker and Associates, the civil design people, and plans and sections by, uh, Mr. Jeanette. The proposed project will involve substantial alterations to the natural land form and have a significant impact on the natural bluff. Mr. Porterfield's already discussed the, um, approximately twenty-five thousand cubic yards of excavation. Uh, there's, the structural integrity of the rock mass will be compromised, be rid of the proposed, uh, subterranean levels, uh, which can cause rock falls and further deterioration of the, uh, bluff face, as the remaining pillar of rock is not expected to have sufficient strength to remain in place during the economic life of the structure. And what I mean by that is that you have this excavation being made on the bluff face and you are going up to a point. That point now is fifty-two point eighty-three feet, whereas before is fifty point seven feet, uh, mean sea level, I'm assuming, or mean lower low, I don't know which, it's not identified. So, there's going to be deterioration here when you set a drill rig that's going to have to get into rock that may be fractured or folded and hard enough that, uh, by the way, a ho ram is a very, very large, it's, it's a, it's a chisel that's put onto a very large backhoe and, so that you can chisel this rock, but that rock will fracture and displace easily. Consequently, you're going to have deterioration of this, uh, and destruction of the slope face. There's going to be stress, stress release within the rock mass, uh, expected to contribute to some cave-in failures of the bluff face and possible instability on adjacent properties. Although, uh, it's been, uh, stated that, uh, there won't be any effect on the two adjacent properties along the south side or, uh, the property along the north side, in order to make this excavation, which extends all the way through here, uh, uh, adjacent to the street and around, there are going to have to be soldier piles placed and tie-back anchors. Now, whether those tie-back anchors are going to be, uh, going into adjacent property and in this instance possibly even as far as extending across the street, they will do that to, to decrease the size and, um, structural capacity that would have to be required. I'm just...
You're going to have to wrap it up.
Uh, very quickly, um, it's my professional opinion that substantial alteration of the bluff inherent in the proposed, uh, Aerie project design will cause significant impact to the, uh, project protected natural land form and that, uh, it is a fair argument that, uh, these significant impacts would occur and should be addressed in an EIR. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, now we're going to get to the general testimony. It's been brought to my attention, there's a gentleman here that's ill that, uh, would like to, would like to speak. He just got out of the hospital, so I'm going to allow him to come forward. So, sir, if you want to come forward.
Just give him the hand mic.
Okay, in the meantime, those that wish to speak, if you'd line up in the aisle over here, uh, we can help move things along quicker. So if you just, uh, line up, I'd appreciate it.
I'm Dr. Mike Milliken, twenty-two, twenty-two channel road, Albo Peninsula. How much time do I have?
You have three minutes, sir.
Okay. Uh, I want to just say, the picture's worth a thousand words and all the words I heard previously were sadly lies. I live right across...
Hold the microphone up to your mouth so we can hear you.
I hear, I live right across from, uh, the Aerie project and have for seventy years. I've seen that whole area developed and I've never seen such a travesty in journalism as the photograph that this shows. They've masked out the ugly and added-on shrubbery that does not exist. Now, everything else after that, I can't attest to, but I cannot trust anybody blatantly will misinform from the very outset in words and then to come out with a, a newspaper like that to try and convince us of an area that does not look like the picture. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, what we're going to do before we go on with the testimony is, um, receive the ballot count on the assessment district. City clerk?
Honorable Mayor and council members, based on the tabulation of the ballots received, there were sixty-one point ninety-seven percent of the ballots submitted in favor of the assessment district for a total assessment of two million fifty-four thousand four hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. Thirty-eight point zero-three percent of the votes were submitted in opposition for a total assessment of one million two hundred sixty thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and eight cents. Based on that tabulation, it is appropriate for the city council, if it is your desire, to proceed with the formation of the assessment district by adopting the resolution confirming the assessments. The resolution is the formal action declaring the results of the ballot procedure, ordering the acquisition of the improvements, confirming the assessments, and approving the final assessment engineer's report.
Okay, is there a motion?
Some, I move, uh, the required action. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, the assessment district is formed.
Thank you.
Okay, back to, uh, back to Aerie, we're jumping around tonight, keeping you guessing. Step forward, state your name for the record, please.
I'll get to the name there, but, uh, my wife helped me out tonight. She said I didn't want to be...
She said I didn't want to be too much of a bulldog for Nancy, so I'll try to continue here in writing.
That's an inside joke.
First, council members, before I start, I'd like to say I'm proud to live in Newport Beach in Corona Del Mar. Standing up here with the letter of the 1-1 United States Marine Corps. I supported the Marines at one time, and my son supported them on their march into Baghdad, where he learned of Purple Heart. So I'd like to thank you for your support of the 1-1, their memorial, and thank you for being our council. Mayor Selig, and members of the council, my name is Scott Bergy, and I live at 214 Carnation, which is a few doors from Aries, Aries. That is really Rick and Karen Julian, my neighbors, and I want to keep them. I first want to make it, make you sure that you are aware that I am here clearly in support of Aries' project. I have lived on this street for many years, and have been very involved in the community. I regularly attend and involved, and involved in the Corona Del Mar Owners Association. I am block leader for the Neighborhood Watch and volunteer for various and other activities within the community. I've been following the Aries project since its inception. I've been to all the planning commission meetings, as well as last year's council meeting. I have talked with my neighbors within our area. I have found that the majority of neighbors fully support this project. The benefit of Aries far outweighs the inconvenience that we will experience during any construction. I am very frustrated that a very small number of people on the street have gone to extremes to create a look as though there is a controversy in our neighborhood. The majority of the people that live here gather on a regular basis and get involved. I speak from my experience that the majority of us definitely support Aries. I hope you will approve of Aries tonight and not put this poor applicant to any more delay. Thank you, council members.
You see why I refer to him as a bulldog.
Okay, remember what...
Rick was a bulldog, that's why I said that.
Remember, the council's looking for information. You saw a lot of information by the applicant and, and the opponents to the project, so we're really looking for new information that'll help us make a decision here tonight. Keith?
Mayor Selig, members of the City Council, my name is Keith Dawson. I've been a resident of Corona Del Mar for 36 years, and like the first speaker, I too was enraged by this full-page ad in the pilot, which I'm sure no one saw, the first speaker mentioned it. What bothers me about it, it gets under my skin, when I see inaccuracies, maybe they're just mistakes, maybe they're honest mistakes, but I hate to use the word tactic, but we've seen this tactic before. This reminded me of two or three years ago, when there was a dispute, we'll call them between the Hatfields and the McCoys, down further on Ocean Boulevard. They had a property overlooking Main Beach there. One, the Hat, Mr. Hatfield, wanted to extend his deck out, and the McCoys didn't want it because they thought it was gonna block their view. And all of a sudden, in the daily pilot, on the front page, I believe, appears this picture of this deck existing, and then some lines drawn on it, showing where the new deck was gonna be. And I saw that, and I said, there's no way, that, that totally blocks these people's view. And then I came down here, like a lot of other folks, and appeared at the hearing, the, I forget, Hatfields and McCoy, one or the other of them objected and appealed to the City Council. I think it was Mr. Jeanette's project, and he indicated that the lines on the drawing that appeared in the daily product, in the daily pilot, were totally wrong. It was a misrepresentation of that project. And what I'm seeing here is very much the same, and I hate to see this community kind of stoop to that level. The Aerie project is a quality project. I've met people that support it. I've become friends with the Julians, and several of the other people that are gonna speak here tonight, and it's, it's a project that's quality. Any project of this significance is gonna have some impact, it just has to. But what you get, I think the only thing that's accurate about this full-page ad is this picture in the center of the existing project, and I, it reminds me of Alcatraz. My wife and I went there recently, I visited Alcatraz for the first time, and as I floated up towards it, I said, jeez, that's the existing Aerie project. That's, that's the before, and here it is, it's the only accurate representation. But the thing I, that irks me most about this, as I'm reading this, and the smallest print on this sheet is right at the bottom, funny thing, it says, quote, "The information contained in this article is based upon information received regarding the Aerie complex and is believed to be accurate. Any errors in the transmission or restatement of the information herein is unintentional, and any liability for the misstatement is specifically disclaimed." Well, there you go. I think that tells you all you need to know about this ad. I very much support the Aerie project, I had planned comments, but this needs to be addressed, and I hate to see this city dip to that, to that level. I very much support the project, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Kent Moore, 210 Carnation Avenue, Corona Del Mar, a 38-year resident at Ocean and Carnation. I've watched everything go up in this particular location since the Channel Reef was built, and there's always been drama and controversy. There've been the same environmental issues brought up several times. Noise, truck trips, excavation. You should've seen what happened at 2495 Ocean Boulevard, when they, when they cut into the cliff. They had to take down part of 2501 Ocean just to get the equipment in there to do the job. But the city okayed it, ultimately. I've already spoken to some of you about what I and others here tonight consider, some of the underlying motives of those who oppose the project, so I'm not gonna belabor that point at all. Some of their arguments are self-serving at best, and don't represent the feelings of most of the residents in my area of Corona Del Mar. And their full-page misrepresentation of the project, which appeared in the daily pilot, is quite troubling and unfortunate. Some of the more radical fringe would like nothing built at this location at all. The fact is that Mr. Julian has a vision for our neighborhood. He wants to create a world-class development for this community. Yeah, it's big, all right. But that size has been reduced, and that piece of property can support this project, as it did the big old apartment house on that spot where I actually lived when I first moved to Corona Del Mar. He's done what the city has asked of him. He's spent millions of dollars in the process getting this far, and he's earned the almost overwhelming support of your own planning department. So what else would you have him do at this point? His efforts have been commendable. I believe that he deserves the support of this council. So tonight, please let him get on with what will be a truly special addition to the village of Corona Del Mar. Thank you.
Thank you, Kent. Three minutes, Dick.
Okay, you got it running. Throughout the harbor, no one is restricted to hypha docks, and, I mean, nobody, what you put on your dock in front of your property. Are we proposing this in the future? I think Don certainly did ask a very viable question there. Are we gonna, half the space along there, he's left blank, so you can look in, and this is the only place on the whole area that you're doing that. Number two, window to the shore. He, no one's protected their locations. How about looking as you just go in the harbor a little bit more, and look back toward bayside? You have, you have docks that come out 150 feet. Why? Because they have to reach deep water to get the place to put the boat. And we allowed all that, in fact, we put them in so that they, it's impossible to see, because they're cut out, it, they form like a, like the hands of a clock, and, and that was shown. At low tide, this lagoon is virtually drained. That's why it grows eelgrass so well, is at the low water level in it. That drained lagoon is built on all the way along our shore, everywhere. And in fact, it shows that most of the space above the lagoon, until you finally get to the bluff, is available for building. That, that would be built on anywhere else in this whole city. And it's crazy that it's not been built on here. But I, I'm not saying that's not nice to look at, but this is an extraordinary gift to the city. Note the huge docks in the bay, a bayside, I mentioned that. Public cannot normally reach this area. We were talking about how the public during the construction might, might be able to bother the sea life and so forth. Particularly about the only thing that can bother that sea life, all the dirt's gonna be taken up from the, from the upside, not the downside. So you're, you're, this thing is being left pristine, which is, that's pretty hard to Finally, this building was given, they made a view plane down the alley there from the corner. So, I mean, that view plane was enhanced dramatically. Now, when the people next door that have complained so violently, they, they cut the view plane, but this, this view plane was kept. This fellow has gone way out of his, out of his, what he normally would be needed to do, and I think we need to, to let him go. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Mayor Selig, council, and staff. My name is Bud Razner, I live at 2500 Ocean Boulevard. I realize now, 38, 37, and 38 years in Newport Beach, we're a bunch of old guys, but here we are. Here we are again. You know, in the early, I've got numbers, though. In the early stages of planning, the neighbors were approached by Rick Julian and asked, what did, were we concerned about? He made adjustments voluntarily, and accordingly. Next, the planning commission, lengthy, and in-depth survey, looked at it, they know as much about it as anybody. Those accommodations were met, they put a lot of conditions, and they came six to one to you. The applicant then came to the City Council, the only reason he had to come to the City Council is less than 600 square feet, but it opened Pandora's Box, and so everybody, as he goes by, takes a nip at it, 'cause they wanna put their print on it. This opened the door to the full review, and the plan was presented and referred back to the planning commission. It wasn't denied, it was referred back, 'cause you said the PLOED should be, where it was to be placed. They took that, took it seriously, and come back, this time, two feet, above two feet higher than that. As far as, I wish I had the crystal ball the fellow has, that he knows that the bluff's gonna fail in the future. I don't know how he knows that. The engineers that are working on it, believe me, that the money and the quality of people that are being engaged by Mr. Julian, they're gonna work that out. It seemed this time not to try and let private, somewhat self-interested opposition dictate public policy. The full-page ad that says most of the neighborhood is a single-family dwelling, that's an erroneous statement, and the publication is simply not true. In fact, 44 addresses facing Carnation, only eight are single-family. On Ocean, 2500 block, 62 dwellings, of which six are single-family. Therefore, up the street, down the boulevard, 106 residences, 14 are singletons. Approximately 55 of those have below-grade parking, not underground, but below-grade, where it involves pumps, potential failure, engineered again. Moreover, there's a standard example of a quarter of an acre with 10,000 square feet of living area, that's predominant. Aerie, it's a large project. Why? It's 1.4 acres, non-submerged, with less than 30,000 feet of livable area that they're asking for. So to minimize the alteration of the bluff, that's another big deal, it doesn't mean you'd never build anything. You guys minimized it, you raised the PLOED up, that minimized the alteration. They're going behind the bluff. That minimized...
Bud, can you wrap it up, Bud?
All right, and they're going higher. My last observation is if this council decides to force some more onerous conditions on this, it would seem somewhat capricious and unfair to do it. This is supposed to be code-based, not a feeling. And somebody said smell. Please consider his property rights, and, you know what, maybe to save you some time, how many people are for this Aerie project? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Bud. Any other speakers?
Hello, my name is John Mickler. I currently live in San Clemente, but I used to live at 2323 Bayside Drive, which is located on Carnation Cove, just below the project. All the time I lived there, I had to look at that ugly apartment complex, and I was just waiting for someone to come along and do something nice there. And I think this Aerie project is very nice. You know, we used to have the China House as the icon for the entrance to the harbor. And I think this Aerie project will become the new icon for the entrance to the harbor, and it'll be worthwhile for, for the entire community. It's well-designed, it's, it's gonna be very unique. It's architecturally interesting, and I think it should be approved for those reasons. The other thing, I think that the neighbors are kinda like, like Pod calling the kettle black, in many instances, the, the most vocal objection that you'll hear tonight, they live in that white house that looks like stacked up containers from Long Beach Harbor. And I just don't think that they should have the right to be judging this project when their house has about 5,000 square feet and a single-car garage that's sitting up on the pylons or whatever, that looks like a, like a container sitting up there on top of the bluff. And they go from the bluff down to the water, and it's white, you can see it for miles, and it's ugly, in my opinion. But that's just my opinion. So, that's my comments, and I got copies here if you want.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Ron Covington, 707 Orchid Street, Corona Del Mar. So I'll be probably a contrarian and fodder for some of the people out here. And I came here, and I'd been watching the project, and yes, I do have a copy of the newsprint, but I, it's not what really got me here. I've always been interested in Corona Del Mar and issues that relate to the scale and the intensity of development in the community. And it seems like issues like this always bring out a lot of concerns and feelings about private versus public concerns. So I guess the big question that comes before you folks is, do private desires, you know, trump public concerns of the project? And, you know, there's a lot of public value in this project, I think we all know that. I mean, for the people that live on the peninsula that can view it, boaters that come by, beachgoers on the peninsula that will see it, people on Babo Island, and so on and so forth. So it, it's more than just a lot situated maybe in the middle of Corona Del Mar between six other lots. This has a lot of public exposure to it. So my gut feeling is, and has been for some weeks, that it's an extremely massive project in scale and very intense. But what really got me out of my seat tonight was not so much that, even though I still feel quite strongly about that, was, was the issues about, the environmental issues that have to do with the, the bay, and the bluff side, down to the, down to the bay. And the gentleman that spoke, I, I think he was with the project, about you're gonna teach people how not to walk on sand dollars, and how people that work on the project are gonna be taught how to not, you know, affect the bay during construction. I've been to a couple Coastal Commission meetings, and to me, this council needs to be better aware on how to deal with these issues than to listen to comments like this that really are unsubstantiated, and really have very little... that really are unsubstantiated and really have very little value. So one of the things that Mrs. Friend talked about, and I don't know her, but I appreciate her coming before you tonight, presenting some ideas that you may want to look at, and one being the environment of the bay. And I'm not, I don't boat, I don't really use the bay, I appreciate its beauty, but that's what got me out of my seat tonight. And so I hope that you will do an EIR project, review on this project. It may be needed. But the bay itself, I mean, I pay attention to the coastline as we go down all the Southern California coast, and I appreciate it very much, and I use that part of the coast, but to really look at this and say, we can simply tell people not to do this or not to do that is not the way to approach a project of this scale. So with that, I appreciate your time.
Members of the council, my name is Carrie Slayback. I live at 426 Riverside Avenue, not in Corona del Mar. I've lived in Newport Beach more than 40 years. I am here because I am concerned about the precedent of density for this project. And I am concerned that the council might throw aside the general plan that was worked so hard on and approve parcels of this density. Hi, Councilwoman Rosansky, you're my councilman. In any case, I would encourage an--
Now, just so you know, my contact lenses are dried out and I have to close my eyes to what--
Oh, okay.
I am hearing everything you're saying.
I've been there. But in any case, I would encourage an EIR. And I would encourage, one more time, that we adhere to the policies of our general plan. As a general rule, that's why it's there. So as shepherds of our neighborhood, as people who respond to the voters of Newport Beach, I would encourage you to deny this project. Thank you.
Mayor and council, my name is Dick Hunsaker, and I'm coming to you to give you testimony today in support of the Aerie project. I'm a resident of Balboa Island, live at 117 Coral. The project can be seen from Coral and the south bayfront. A walkway which I walk almost every day. I have reviewed the revised elevations, the model, and I wholeheartedly support the proposed construction and feel that it'll make a vast improvement over what's there today. I also support the project with the reduction of units should mitigate the traffic, and also the fact that 79 percent of the project will be left in this open space. Thank you very much.
My name is Marilyn Beck. I live at 303 Carnation. I own a property at the north end of Carnation on the bluff. And I want to just make a couple of comments. One is that this is not a popularity contest. It doesn't matter how many people raise their hand in favor of it or opposed to it. It's a matter of whether or not it, if it meets the requirements of the general plan and the CLUP, sorry, I'm nervous, I'm not a good speaker. If it meets it, then you should approve it. And if it doesn't meet it, then you shouldn't. But I want to come before you tonight to just mention a couple of things that perhaps people haven't really focused on. They have a little bit, and in fact, the proponents of this have mentioned it, and Mr. Jeanette's slides actually show pictures of the Carnation bluff, the properties that are along that bluff. I want to point out a couple of things. This project is more than 63,000 square feet and goes two levels below the 50.7 line on an acre and a half roughly of two combined properties. Carnation Avenue along the bluff is comprised of 10 properties, including the two which make up the current Aerie project. The total square footage of the 10 properties combined, including the buildings, patios, garages, storage, et cetera, today is less than a total of 60,000 square feet along the entire coastal Carnation bluff. If you take the two Aerie projects, properties out of that equation, the total of the remaining eight properties is less than 40,000 square feet in total. On the other side of the street, it's made up of similar properties. Aerie at 63,000 square feet is more than 50 percent larger than all the other homes and properties on the Carnation bluff. What's more disturbing is that of those eight properties on Carnation bluff, four are original construction and will be redeveloped. They were shown in that picture. Some of them have the net over them. They are contiguous to one another. If you approve Aerie tonight, what is there to stop another developer coming along and buying those four properties in the middle of the block and building another Aerie-type project at 50,000 or 60,000 square feet? Conditions are exactly the same. It's a coastal bluff. You put four contiguous properties together and you have the square footage land use to be able to do that. Once you have approved Aerie, you've set a precedent, we will have two hotel-like structures on the bluff of Carnation. What's worse is that much of Corona del Mar is zoned multifamily. Right now, few parcels are combined, I'm sorry. Aerie will set a dangerous precedent, allowing developers to start up buying contiguous properties and building large structures all over Corona del Mar. You don't have the authority to deal with that, but you have the authority to deal with coastal bluff project like Aerie.
Can you wrap it up, Mel?
Yes. Provisions require the development on coastal bluffs to be minimized and to be kept within the size and scale of existing neighborhoods. Aerie fails on these two points at 63,000 square feet, it maximizes development, it doesn't minimize it, and it is nowhere near being within the scale and size of the neighborhood.
Alan Beek from Harbor Highlands. Mr. Mayor, a negative declaration is totally inappropriate for something that does as massive environmental changes, carving away a piece of the bluff and removing it altogether. Our bluffs are precious, we have policies and regulations protecting them, but we're dealing with a bit of a paradox. Those policies all deal with the, they contemplate the possibility of plastering things on top of the bluff or plastering things on the front of the bluff. They, none of them contemplate anybody would just take the bluff itself away altogether and put a house there instead. I'm going to reason by analogy. This is a little bit like having your Bill of Rights that give you habeas corpus and the speedy trial and no testifying against yourself, but neglect to make a law against murder and removing you from the site altogether. Now, that's what we're dealing with here. We have all these rules protecting putting things on top of the bluff or in the front of the bluff, but there is nothing dealing with just taking the bluff away altogether. So I'm asking you to use some common sense and make a decision that murder is really worse than violating your civil rights. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Martin. I'm not very good at speaking. I own 239 Carnation over in Corona del Mar. I live on Balboa Island. I would really appreciate it, being a resident of Balboa Island and viewing the bluff, if you would require story polls. I think most of the people in the area can't visualize what this would entail unless they see them. Laguna Beach has laws that they require story polls three to six months before they even go to the planning commission. Maybe we should put that on the ballot. It would be something that people could see everything. The other thing is, this follows the PLOD of 50-point-whatever, but it goes 20 feet below that. My God, when I get to build, I can go way down there. I don't want to do that. It's ruining the bluff. If he wants to build this structure, which he can because it's his property, have him stay above the 50-point-whatever it is, instead of going 20 feet lower and destroying that bluff. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the city council. I'm Lisa Vallejo. Okay, I'd just like to address a couple things, comments that were made earlier tonight, and one of them was by Brian Jeanette regarding the car elevators that Steve asked about. And that was, I have heard that for emergencies, there must be one car elevator always down at the bottom of the parking structure and one at the top. So I just wanted to say that that's what I'd heard for emergency situations in that, in the structure. I also want to, for the record, say we have met with the applicant several times, including last week. And we've expressed from the very beginning, like we did after we first heard about this in December of '06, and it came to planning in February of '07, that we just thought it was just too big and too much for the area. And, excuse me, we just have gotten nowhere. So we're looking to you guys. Also, I want to say, we've heard from, personally, I've heard from architects and builders in the area who are astounded that this project was ever considered for Newport Beach. They pointed out that part of the charm and character of this area is that we have different kinds of houses next to each other, like a Cape Cod house next to a Spanish house with space in between them. Like if this property were made into four homes, each of which could be equal to the newly-built house next door to it, which is approximately 6,000 square feet, or if it was five condos even, or whatever, there's other alternatives here that would be in keeping with the neighborhood that is single-family homes and condos ranging from 2,000 to 5,000 square feet. And four homes there at 6,000 would be half the size of the proposed Aerie complex. This is also visible, the homes are visible across the bay from our neighborhood are included in this. You look out across the bay, you don't see anything of this size anywhere else. And Marilyn mentioned the precedent this will set for future developments all over the city. I think it's important to acknowledge that the City of Newport Beach General Plan received a 2008 National Planning Achievement Award from the American Planning Association. The planning effort to update our 30-year general plan was successful because Newport Beach voters voted for it, and we approved it. If you are conflicted about this, you know, who are you going to serve? The residents or the applicant and a small group of his supporters? You must decide what will do more harm to the city as our local government. And you must uphold the general plan, the CLUP, and the California Coastal Commission policies that protect our neighborhoods and this highly-visible coastal bluff that is seen by thousands of people from the harbor. And it's not just for the old people or the old guys or whoever they say they are, it's for the future generations, you guys. I mean, come on, you've got to look at this and just, you know, you're not serving the community when they dig a hole there that everyone will be aware of then, and then you'll have to stand behind it and you'll be accountable for it. And I just want to say, we really appreciate the work you do, all you guys, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're looking for new information.
My name is Gordon Miller. I live at 2525 Ocean Boulevard, which is known as Channel Reef. I've been there for 16 years. I've gone through several rebuilds on Carnation, and they, like any rebuild, has upset your driving patterns at different times. But the result is usually better than what was there before. The other thing is, is that Mr. Rosansky asked about traffic in Negress. We have 47 units. We come and go many times a day. We basically have one car either going in or one car going out, so we don't have two directions of traffic at the same time. In the years that I've lived there, we've probably had to wait for a half a minute or a minute over a week, maybe three times. Traffic is not that much. We have 47 units. So the wait is very little as far as the foot traffic on the sidewalk. Most of that traffic comes in the morning when people are walking up and down Ocean Boulevard. So that in itself is very little interference, and both the cars going in and out of our place of residence, either wait for them or they wait for us. So to address that problem, it's been very little. I was originally not for the project, but when I went over and took a look at what he's doing, and the way he's scaled it back, he has really tried to conform to a pattern that will probably improve our neighborhood. So I will say that traffic-wise, construction is not going to be easy, and we're not looking forward to that. But the result will probably be much better in the end. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Pat Parsons, and for the last 10 and a half years, I've lived at that same container up on 2525 Ocean Boulevard, the Channel Reef building. We have, as Gordon said, 47 units. Last week, I attempted to take a poll of all our owners to find out everyone's opinion about this project. I was able to talk to 46. Now, some of our units are owned by an individual, some are owned by multiple members. I was able to reach and personally talk to 46 of our owners. Of that 46, 41 were not in favor of the project as it had been proposed. Four were undecided, and one was for it. Now, I lastly would like to mention and present to the board a letter from our senior-most member-owner Patricia Zorn, who some of you might know because she's been around for 96 years in this area. She also has had a wealth of experience out in the harbor, and she's written a letter, which if my red beeper doesn't go off, I'd like to read because it's very short, and then I'd like to give it to you. Dear Newport City Council, I am opposed to the Aerie project as presented. My concern besides the building size is the marina. To me, there are several reasons, the size of the slips, 60, 55, 45, et cetera, that do not conform with the slips in surrounding marinas, such as 30 and 35 adjacent. The unknown factor of sand buildup. We at Channel Reef have experienced this difficulty, and getting permission to dredge regularly is a major problem. A marina can turn into a sand beach. Our harbor entrance is an irreplaceable asset, let's not destroy it. Sincerely, Patricia Zorn. Please excuse, I'm not computer-trained. So may I give this to you?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Selig, and council members. My name is Kathleen McIntosh. My husband and I live next door to the proposed development. It seems that this project has been flawed from the time it was first submitted to the city, or the staff originally would not have recommended denial of the project in February of 2007. We are here again going over the same points regarding over-massing, non-compliance to city policy, the CLUP, and the California Coastal Commission policies, which are part of the reason for the recommendation of denial in the first place. I still remain incredulous that these issues have not been resolved, but that the planning commission has now taken a stance that non-compliance, in this case, is all right. Granted, the developer has made concessions in reducing the number of his units from nine to eight, but the fact remains that he is still over-massing the property, is still not in compliance with city policy, the California land use plan, or the California Coastal Commission policies. He has now added a private marina that is bordering on non-compliance with coastal resources policies. He is replacing 500 feet of dock space that can berth four boats with 3,000 feet of dock space to berth an additional four or a total of eight, and is building 155-foot-long concrete wave attenuator that will house boats out into the public right-of-way and will destroy natural resources, do further damage to Carnation Cove, and will endanger the protected eel grass that is mysteriously disappearing around that area. I have taken the time to drive Coast Highway from Hope Hospital to Laguna Beach and Bayside Drive from PCH to Marguerite Avenue, and nowhere do you find massing of any structures in the portions that are being proposed for Aerie in a residential neighborhood other than Channel Reef. And if that were to come before the city today, it would probably be denied for all the same reasons. reasons that Aerie should be denied. You've heard the facts from the authorities on both sides of the issues. You are faced with the decision this evening that should not be taken lightly or without thought to the future of Newport Beach and its continued development. In meeting with councilpeople this week, and this past week and a half, I have heard you express your desire to do what is right for the City of Newport Beach. Doing right means not doing wrong, and this project, as you have learned this evening, is definitely wrong and will continue to be so until it meets all, not just some of the criteria established by the City of Newport Beach and the California Coastal Commission. Please do the right thing and again deny this project and request a complete and concise EIR. Thank you for your time.
I need you to get up eventually, Jan.
Good evening. My name is Jan Flanders. I'm a member of SPAUN, live in Newport Heights. SPAUN has written a letter in opposition to the project, but that was before the more current revisions of the project, and SPAUN has not taken a position, the SPAUN Steering Committee has not taken a position since they revised the project. I, however, have sent you an email this morning detailing the notice of violation of the Coastal Act given by the Coastal Commission staff about the unpermitted removal of vegetation on the site in February, and the fact that that ought to be rejuvenated before you make any decisions, because as it just might happen to be, that that area that is denuded might be the exact area that is shaded by the cantilevers that are part of the project, that stick out from the project and virtually render the bluff face below those cantilevers unlivable for any type of vegetation or organism. And to illustrate that, I'd ask you to look at this page five, the west elevation of your report, and you can see how that cantilever sticks out over the bluff. So, what's sticking out is not going to let any light underneath. Essentially, you're going to have a bluff which is shaded by a cantilever and not allow any kind of bluff vegetation to persist. Brian Jeanette also showed a slide called "The Volumetric calculation: Twenty-One Percent Reduction," and that showed two cantilevers sticking out. So, the fact that the PLOED may be raised up fifty-two feet might be an illusion if you don't have much of a bluff below those cantilevers. So that's new information which you might be considering when you consider the impact of this project on the bluff. I, as a person, also agree with Councilmember Gardner that the environmental impacts of the marine environment, including the floor of the bay with those twenty pilings for the new dock, I think that ought to be considered. And I think that, overall, this is a very massive project that is at a scale with the neighborhood, and that you ought to be requiring a full environmental impact report, if not totally rejecting the project for a better revision. They've already shown that they can revise the project and downside from before. I think they need to go back to the drawing board and make an even better project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Okay, anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor Selig and council. My name's Don Crote. I live in Newport Heights. I'm the president of the Newport Heights Homeowners Association, registered architect. I hold a seat on the Implementation Committee that's currently trying to form some zoning regs, which is an in-between spot for everybody between now and when we implement the general plan and the coastal land use plan. So I know firsthand about the policies that are in front of you this evening. I also spent three and a half years largely down the table from Nancy during the general plan process. So, the give and take regarding these policies is something that we've all seen come and go. From a homeowner's standpoint, and from a homeowners' association standpoint, the hope that we retain the policies and the hope of them, and what they'll mean to the future development, is really what we hope to see the council gear onto and latch onto the most. I'm also here tonight as the Steering Committee member of SPAUN who sat for three meetings. Jan is correct that we haven't seen the latest rendition of this, but in the three prior renditions that were, I would rather suspect, twenty percent larger, they resulted in a unanimous vote against the project on three separate occasions. So I wish to pass that along to the council. In regard to forming this committee, or in regard to representing SPAUN, SPAUN also retained an environmentalist that authored remarks regarding the mitigated negative declaration. And we're hopeful that there'll be comments to that mitigated negative dec, perhaps to the point that they might shed light on the fact that there really is an EIR required or there isn't. But I think that the city attorney might have made the statement that we're not going to provide any remarks to any of those comments, and I think that would be a mistake. In regard to new information, the staff has gone to a lot of trouble to make and form the predominant line of existing development. And in this sketch, the fifty-point-seven, if you could follow the bluff line up here in this diagram, we know that the establishment of fifty-point-seven does not necessarily allow the applicant to build below that line. Also, as the mute presentation so clearly pointed out, unless there's at least sixty inches back from the bluff face at that point, and construction begins there and not underneath this, we're going to have some problems with the failure of the bluff. And thirdly, and this is the last point, Ed, I promise. Jan touched on this a little earlier, but the making of the balcony beyond the line established by the existing, line of existing development is nowhere in the provisions of the general plan. So, on the south side of the project, where the building actually goes beyond the line and the bluff's being replaced by fake rock, this doesn't comply with what we would see as compatibility in the neighborhood or the preservation of what we think is coastal bluff. Thanks very much.
Don, can you leave that with the city manager, that exhibit?
I can.
Evidence.
What are you doing?
I've got a spike.
Oh, I have a spike.
Is that down beside you?
I'm not signing that.
Don, could I, I want a clarification. Are you suggesting that the excavation is five feet back, or it needs to be five feet back?
In my experience, coastal bluff construction like this, predominantly rock and something less than rock, even if, even if the most, the most careful construction techniques are employed, there's going to be loss of the area right up to that build-to line. So unless the build-to line is sixty inches and back of the predominant line, where the beginning of the keeping of the bluff is mandated, you're going to lose that first sixty inches. So that's, that's what's illustrated in the little diagram, and that's what we'd hope to achieve if the project's passed. Is that clear? Not really?
I understand.
Well, yeah, I use you, of course.
Clear to me.
You're basically confirming what the, one of the experts testified to earlier, that he felt that there would be significant loss of the bluff face if they excavated down the way they intended to.
In fact, I was so sure that my professional opinion wouldn't work, that I think the protractors of the, the design hired them independently. So I haven't seen or met those people. I know of their work, and we've cross-consulted with them before, but that's a very, very well-presented and very factual presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Don.
My name is Bill McCaffrey. I also live at Channel Reef, 2525 Ocean Boulevard. I've been there for twenty-two years. I'm aware of a few people in our building who are opposed. I'm also aware of at least as many or more who are in favor of the project. However, I have observed that, to the best of my knowledge, the people who have gone over and seen the project and educated themselves are in favor of it. And to a large extent, and maybe to an exclusive extent, people who are opposed have not done that, to my knowledge. Also, anybody who is, who understands what it took to build Channel Reef, and what was excavated and removed, and the size of the structure, I think it's somewhat hypocritical for somebody who lives there to oppose a project of this type. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Going once, going twice?
He's very kindly, uh...
Just come to the microphone and state your name, please.
Okay. My name is Jean Milliken. I'm the wife of Dr. Milliken that you allowed to speak, and I had to leave. So I, I may be saying again what someone else has, but I don't know anybody else from our side of the bay who studies this gray building that is right in front of us, the ugliest thing I've ever seen. The Channel Reef and the beautiful homes to the left of it, which are to the right to this project for us, are very nice. When the presentations were made, they discussed the small houses. I don't know that they're small. They're small in relation to this project on either side. None of them discussed the Channel Reef. It's huge. From our side, it's huge compared to this. And the only other thing I want to say is, I have studied this model. I've met the very nice people who are attempting to let the neighborhood know who they are and be a friendly part of this area, who plan to live here. Many people who do these projects, make the projects, and leave the area, but they haven't addressed the fact that this is an aesthetically beautiful project from across the bay. And that's why my husband was showing that paper, but he wasn't well enough to explain that he had seen the project, and he didn't think the newspaper made it correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? This is the last call. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close that part of the hearing. And Mr. Jeanette, would you like to respond? Or Mr. Peon?
Well, we'll probably both take a shot at different issues. It's been pronounced worse. I'm Tim Peon, counsel...
I should know better.
...counsel for the applicant. And I'd like to address a few of the comments that have been made, and I'm going to jump around, only because the comments jumped around, and I wrote them down in sequence. But the very first thing I would like to talk about is the MND process itself. I'm not your lawyer. I can give you my thoughts, but I don't think your lawyer's going to disagree. I think that there was some mischaracterization by Ms. Friend of what the process is and what Mr. Kreitzer said in response to Councilwoman Dagel's question. And the EIR process works that the initial study is prepared. It may identify potential significant impacts. That doesn't mean any EIR is prepared. That means that you go in and you figure out what types of mitigation would be required, what revisions to the project would be required to reduce those potential impacts to a level of insignificance. Then, the applicant must decide if the applicant will agree to those changes. If the applicant agrees to those changes, and there's no remaining significant effects, and then a negative declaration can be prepared, in fact, the guidelines say shall be prepared in that case. The mitigated negative declaration is prepared and circulated for public review. It does require that the applicant agrees to all those revisions before the mitigated negative declaration is circulated, which is why we've had so many mitigated negative declarations in this case, because some issues came along, and the applicant was willing to address those and resolve those. Where it takes a different course is if, after, if either the applicant says, "No, I, I want to fight that," then a significant impact remains, and you have to go forward and do an EIR. Or, if after the mitigated negative declaration is prepared, there are significant environmental effects still remaining, then you do an EIR. So when Councilwoman Dagel asked the question earlier, is there not a fair argument, and we all have heard plenty of times, fair argument, is there not a fair argument that there's traffic impacts? The answer that I heard Mr. Kreitzer say was yes, and then he said, "Well, why not do an EIR?" Because the mitigated negative declaration addresses those impacts, mitigation measures were imposed, the applicant agreed to those before the mitigated negative declaration was circulated, and therefore, a mitigated negative declaration is the right product in this case. And that's how it works. It's complicated, but that's how it works. And if you were to do an EIR, you would do the same studies. You wouldn't have anything new in the way of studies. You do the same studies. You presumably reach the same conclusions, and you presumably have the same mitigation measures. And that's why SEQA establishes a mitigated negative declaration process, so you don't have to go to all that work and all that expense, if, early in the process, all the mitigation's been agreed to. That's what's happened here. So I just, I think it's important that these words, "fair argument," get tossed around, and of course, there's a fair argument that there may be something. That's not the end of the discussion. It goes from there to was it addressed in the mitigated negative declaration, the conditions of which the applicant accepted. There are a lot of platitudes being thrown around that we're going to eradicate the ecosystem. Well, you heard Mr. Kreitzer again say, "Those studies were done. These issues were addressed. Mitigation was imposed." Some people may not like the mitigation or think it'll be effective, but it's the mitigation, and frankly, it's standard types of mitigation. Public education, education of residents about those types of issues, it may seem silly to some of us, but nonetheless, it's pretty standard mitigation. Make sure that people know what the environment is that they're living in, because if you don't tell them, then they're likely to be less careful, less sensitive. The, we have a picture here that I would consider to be the neighborhood. Now, we heard Mrs. McIntosh say that if Channel Reef came before you today, it probably wouldn't be approved. That very well may be a true statement. I don't doubt that. I'm not going to guess what you buy. I think there's a good chance it would have some challenges. That doesn't mean that Channel Reef is not part of the neighborhood today. Channel Reef is the next-door neighbor of the McIntoshes today. It is part of the neighborhood. You've got a lot of discretion. We don't stand up here. We haven't been the ones using the words vested rights. We're not arguing those types of things. I think you know that. And you, you have discretion in terms of interpreting and applying your policies. We're not saying you don't. But we do ask for a fair playing field. And when you're looking at compatibility with the neighborhood, that's part of the neighborhood. You want to drop a net over the four multifamily projects, as was done earlier. How about dropping a net over Channel Reef and moving it over to this project? It's, it's also the next-door neighbor of the McIntoshes. So, again, you're going to look at this, there's a lot of subjectivity. But please, you know, don't, none of the, you'll notice that none of the exhibits, none of the slides, none of the pictures that were shown by the opposition managed to go beyond the McIntosh residence. This is that the, the neighborhood ended when the McIntosh residence ended. That's not the case. Let's just be fair. You know, stay completely unique to the community, Mr. Porterfield's comment. Channel Reef, forty-seven units, I think someone said earlier, all the way down to the water compared to eight units. Not, just not an appropriate comparison. Very disingenuous. Let's also think of what the options are. I've read some of the submittals, and they seem to be saying this should be single-family residential. Well, guess what? It's not. Your general plan, your zoning, says this is multifamily. So what some of the opponents are doing, coming and saying that we want to violate the general plan, which is not the case in our opinion, again, you, you have to interpret that. They want the general plan to be changed. They don't want multifamily. They don't want the owner of this property to be able to develop the property according to the general plan and zoning. That seems, again, disingenuous, coming from folks who are saying... That seems, again, disingenuous, coming from folks who are saying, be consistent with your general plan. Do you want to move four projects to that, this lot? Do you want to subdivide the lot? Remember, it's bigger, and yes, there's one, another lot being merged with it. But do you want to have four lots? And do you think that's gonna be less construction when you build it to the same intensity? You saw, you saw Brian's slides, the intensity of those other projects is every bit as much as this. So there's, you know, let's think about what this all really means in practical terms, as opposed to having one cohesive unit there in a couple buildings that do have some separation. Which properties, by the way, are not really compatible, at least in terms with the neighborhood? It's the McIntosh and Vallejo residences. Now, we all may feel the same way, if we were in single-family residential homes in a multifamily neighborhood with Channel Reef to, to our left, we may not want something else there. We went back through the city's records, and I believe it's 1984, it's in the 1980s, and when these properties were being zoned. And for those of you who remember Jim Hewerker, when he was planning director, he was asked, the minutes reflect it, he was asked the question with respect to those properties becoming single-family residential zone. And you know, in what Brian showed you earlier, they're about the only ones. Question, Mr. Hewerker, is this spot zoning? Answer, yes. So, they're the ones that are not, they're not generally consistent with the neighborhood. They're the single-family residential spot zone projects. I have to point out, Mr. Van Der Sluit mentioned the Coastal Staff letter. Factually, we believe that to be incorrect, but let's not debate that. The fact of the matter is, if you look at the letter, the Coastal Staff says, when you get to Coastal Commission, let's address this issue. And we would suggest that if we're gonna give credibility to the letter that comes from Coastal Staff, then let's just do it the way that that very letter says it should be handled, and that's to address those issues when it gets to Coastal Staff. Let me see, I, I believe, I believe those were, for my part, those were the responses on the things that have the, the legal implications, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And then Mr. Janet's can address some of the technical and planning issues.
Any questions, Mr. Peon? Mr. Hen?
Yeah, I'm still confused about this view of the cove and the marina, and whether boats should be included into consideration when we're talking. Do you have, can you clarify that at all?
Well, I, I'm not sure I can clarify it. I think that's an issue, just being candid, over which you have discretion. I can give you my thoughts on it, and you've heard some of those. You know, again, you look at, it is interesting to note there that there are a lot of slips there. You may not be able to see them all, including Vallejos, McIntoshes, others that are pretty sizable. If you put boats in those, then, yeah, you're gonna have the same issue, you're gonna be blocking, but they're, they're not, a lot of them aren't there right now. It is an interesting precedent you would be setting, just like it would be with excavating behind a bluff. Nobody's wiping out a bluff. That, again, is a gross exaggeration. But excavating behind a bluff is done throughout the, the community, and it's a common construction practice. Likewise, having, having boats in the harbor is a pretty common practice. And as Councilman Webb said, you're, you're talking about a very interesting precedent you'd be setting when you start looking into these things. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you you don't have the discretion to look at them. Whether it's an environmental impact, well, there's, you know what? There's a view corridor that we've talked about, the one that's being expanded, and guess what? There's a parking space right in front of that. And trucks can park there. And the Vallejos park there. So what's the implication of that? Why is that different than, than a boat? Do you want to get, do you feel that those are the types of impacts that you really want to be looking at, that you find to be significant impacts? And do you want to open up that can of worms? Again, that's your, that's your discretion.
Councilwoman Daigle?
Did you indicate that to avoid an EIR, that you have to mitigate to the level of insignificance?
Yes.
Okay. Now, how many trucks per day are on carnation?
Well, I, I don't have, I don't have those numbers. You can ask Ms. Janet.
Okay, 'cause I believe it's in excess of fifty per day, so I don't know, I'm not necessarily viewing that as insignificant.
But that's not where the analysis stops. The anal, when you look at traffic and you look at the impacts, you go, you address the issues and you impose mitigation measures, just like you would with an EIR. And, and then, if the judgment is that with those mitigation measures imposed, you've reduced that traffic to a level of insignificance, which is what the MND concluded, with the imposition of, of traffic mitigation measures, a management program to address that, that deals with time and all of those things. Yes, it's your, it's your judgment to make, but I think it's important to understand that the number of trips is not where the analysis stops in the MND, and it's not where SEQA stops the analysis, and that has, that analysis has been completed in the MND. The mitigation was established. We can't pretend that the mitigation isn't contained in the MND. It is, and it was agreed to by the property owner, which is what would happen with an EIR.
Councilman Curry?
Same study, same study, same mitigation.
Councilman Curry?
Mr. Peon, in light of Dr. Van Der Sluit's comments, is it the applicant's intention to address the revegetation issue as he goes through the process with the Coastal Commission develops this project?
Well, of course it is. I don't think there'd be any way to avoid that, but of course it is. And just for the record, there, it was trimming, not removal, but the letter says differently. But it will be addressed with the Coastal Staff and with the Coastal Commission, as they suggested when we go through that process.
Thank you, Mr. Peon. Mr. Janet?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. I am going to make this short. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Sid Neblet is here to discuss soils issues, if that's a concern of yours as well. One other point, the visuals that Mr. Porterfield offered to the commission or the council were inaccurate. And quite frankly, if I treated any of our projects where we tore apart forty-seven percent of the bluff that I'm saying we're gonna maintain, I'd probably be doing work in Yuma. And I don't have that intent. We really take it very serious that these coastal sites that we work on, it's critical to maintain the bluffs that are there and the natural resource that are there. And we intend to do the same thing with the site. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Janet?
Just one, get back to my favorite subject, fake rocks. For the emergency exit, is there going to be, do we have to lose a lot of the natural bluff to create that opening?
Actually, Councilman Gardner, the photos that I had that showed the concrete and the pipes, it's right in that same area. So we're taking out the stuff that really needs to be taken out anyway.
I've got a couple of questions. You've done a lot of projects along the coast. Have you ever had a bluff fail?
No.
Do you recall the amount of material that was excavated out of Porta Velo and what, how it compares to what we're talking about here?
It was approximately twenty-two thousand yards.
And what are we talking about here?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Well, I lived next to that project, and it only took him thirty days to excavate. And there were representations made that this was gonna take six months. Do you have any comment on that?
It will not take six months. One of the differences, though, between this site and the Porta Velo is an example, is they will, they will excavate, they'll drill for the pile, the caissons, and then as they're excavating down, they'll stop. The trucks leaving the site will stop while they build the shoring walls, and then they'll come back and do the next stage. So it's not as though the trucks are moving, you know, one day after the next for that period of time. There's breaks in between while they're doing the building of the wall, and then they pick it back up. And so then, they'll do it in flights or lifts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hen, do you have a question?
One other quick question. How far down did you excavate on Porta Velo?
It was about seventeen feet.
Okay. And this one is around twenty feet?
This, from, well, from, from the street, it's about forty.
No, I'm, I'm talking about, it's, this is twenty feet below the...
The predominant line? Yes.
Predominant line?
Yes.
Even though there are some parts of it that'll be excavated, quite a bit more than twenty feet?
Right. Against the street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the City Council. We've got really two issues here we have to deal with. One is the mitigated negative declaration, and depending on what our decision is on that, we'll determine, I presume, on what our options will be on the main project application. There's been a number of issues brought up by, by council members on the mitigated negative declaration, as well as the, as the public. The view issue, of course, is, is one that was addressed by Councilwoman Gardner and Councilman Hen, the issue of the biological resources. And then, Councilwoman Daigle brought up the, the issue of the, of the traffic. So I, I would suggest the first thing we do is discuss the mitigated negative declaration, and our options are to, to find it adequate, and that the, all of the issues have been identified and mitigated to a level of insignificance, or that we would want to have more information on any of the issues that were brought up today. And I guess we would have to recirculate the mitigated negative deck if we did that? Is that correct?
I think, no, not necessarily. It would depend upon what the additional information is, and as that information was gathered and brought back to, whether or not the additional information resulted in additional mitigation measures or identified additional problems. If it doesn't, if it's just additional information, it might not require recirculation.
And I guess the, the third alternative would be that we could find that certain things were not mitigated to levels of insignificance and call for an EIR. Is that correct or not correct?
That would be correct if you were to determine based upon the record tonight that there was something that identified a significant impact, that the mitigated negative deck did not mitigate to beyond a level of significance. The other issue that could also occur if you determined you needed additional information, and when we came back with that or during that process, as we're looking at that information before we brought it back, there was a determination made, maybe jointly with the applicant, that maybe something like that had been provided. The, the real issue that you have tonight with regards to that is the presentation that was made by the experts as to the, the potential failure of the bluff. I think the rest of the information kind of blended, there was kind of a blending of a discretionary decision on the applicability of the general plan and those with environmental. And so if you're separating that out, the real significant information, I think, tonight was the information that was provided on the anticipated failure of the bluff, potentially also with regards to the truck traffic and maybe some potential increases that might occur there. You have, you potentially have an expert saying one impact, another expert saying another. So what you, when you get into an environmental document, an MND, you're looking at substantial evidence to support the finding that it's been reduced to, reduced to a less than significant impact. If you have another expert coming in, then the question is, is there substantial evidence based upon that expert's opinion that creates a fair argument that there potentially is one, contrary to what the mitigated negative declaration? So what you'd have to look at is, that expert opinion that was brought to you, is that substantial evidence that supports a fair argument? If you feel like the information that Mr. Janet provided and the accuracy of that information doesn't create substantial evidence in your mind that it creates one, then you might be able to find that, that there hasn't been enough evidence to support a fair argument. And one request that I would have, depending upon how the council feels about this, I would recommend that if you, if you do feel like you need additional information, or you do think that some, in light of the fact that we just received this information and these plans at six fifty-five tonight, it is kind of difficult, I think, for the council or for staff in evaluating the information that was provided as to accuracy, and whether it does, does create any kind of an issue that we could recommend to you one way or the other. It, it's difficult in this, in this, in the circumstances, because of the lateness of this information that was provided. So one option might be for the council to consider, after they're done with all this, to ask for the additional information, for us to be able to do that evaluation and come back with a revised resolution that would reflect all the issues that have been brought out, and then we give you something more definitive to act upon.
Okay. Councilwoman Gardner?
As I said, I'm concerned about the view with the boats, and it hasn't been addressed. And I, I don't know that I would say at this point, well, I'm willing to throw out the whole mitigated negative declaration based on my feeling about it, but I certainly would like to see renditions from different points of view of the proposed marina with boats in it, and I don't mean rowboats, because they're not gonna be rowboats, I know, and to give a sense of how it does obscure the views of the cove and the rock formations and, and that, and, and come back with some information on that. So we can do, we could just delay, it was my understanding, if we wanted more information on some of these issues, instead of just throwing out everything. And then we could decide, of course, throw out everything if we decided that there was a problem with that.
Yes, and, and to maybe highlight, I know that a lot of people brought up the question about looking at the boats in this situation, and we've never done this before, and it's the first time. And I do appreciate that point of view. I think that in, when Councilmember Gardner brought this up to me, I went back and looked at it, and the difference is that this cove is identified as, and I'm, see if I can find the exact language, but it's in the context of the habitat, but it is identified as a, a relic, I guess they called it a relic, a habitat within the harbor, and it's the only one remaining. And so what did not occur, as I think within this context, is that there was not an explanation or an analysis of whether the cove itself is a scenic resource. All the scenic resource evaluation in this MND dealt only with the bluff. And I think that's what Councilmember Gardner is trying to say, is that there should be some sort of an analysis as to whether the cove itself is a scenic resource, and whether, in this particular case, it's so unique as to the impact of boats and the docks. And I don't think that, I didn't get the sense that there was an idea that this was actually a problem, but it, that it, there wasn't enough information in the MND for you to make an evaluation.
Right. Isn't that what I said?
Okay. Were you satisfied on the biological resource explanation by the consultant? Because that was your other point, so let's get that on the table.
I don't have any evidence to refute it. I was trying to get some, some information just to satisfy myself, and I haven't gotten it. So yes, I guess I have to accept it.
Okay. Councilman Hen?
First off, I really appreciate that explanation by the city attorney just now, because it did help crystallize the issue for me. It's a two-part question, is, is that cove a scenic resource that should be protected? That's question number one. And number two, are there mitigation measures that would allow for that in an appropriate manner, if it is deemed to be a resource that needs to be protected? There are views of things all around the bay that some people might say are pretty scenic or important to preserve, and others might not. I'd, I'd just like better guidance on that point. On the issue of the bluff and excavation of the bluff, I, I just have to say that it, it's hard for me to understand how we can deny the idea of excavating this bluff, especially in that it will be excavated in a way that isn't visible, and yet allow so many other projects to occur that have substantial excavation of a bluff. It's just hard to understand how that would be an appropriate outcome for this project, to deny them the ability to do that. In general, I, this is, there's been a lot of talk about the mass and size of this project. Well, heck, it's a one-point eight, one-point-four acre parcel. It's got a lot of length to it. It happens to be with the combination of the two, a single, large parcel, which strikes me that no matter what here, there will be a project that will have significant mass in appearance. And so that fact all alone, to me, doesn't mean that it should be denied or that it's necessarily...
Councilman Hen, could we stick with the mitigated negative declaration? We'll get to the project.
All right. That's fine. And I am not, with regard to that, I am, thank you for the guidance, Mr. Mayor. I am, I am not...
At least somebody listens to me.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I pay attention, I'm not sure. But it's the, I'm not troubled, I think there was an adequate answer on the biological resource issue, and so that's all I have to say on that.
Okay. Anyone else want to weigh in on the mitigated negative deck? Councilman Webb?
I'm, I'm satisfied that it, that it handled the views. I just can't, I just do not feel comfortable with looking at our harbor and reevaluating our views of whether or not there are boats or no boats. The question, the statement was, well, this is the only one. What about Pirate's Cove? Now, I realize that that's a little bit down the road a piece, and, and it's bluffs and...
When we propose a marina, you'll hear me on Pirate's Cove, too.
I know, but the comment was made, this is the last one. This is the only one, and...
I'm quoting their own experts, that this is a marine relic.
Okay.
All right. I still, I still feel comfortable with the mitigated negative declarations determinations in here, and I don't feel that I support us changing our policies and looking at boat docks with and without boats to determine whether or not we're going to approve a project.
Okay. Mayor Prokhor Dugel?
Yes, I'm sticking to traffic here. In order to judge if the level of impact is significant in terms of the traffic, I think we need to pin down the, you know, what exactly is the plan, the number of trips, the duration of exporting this dirt. So if we can provide some more clarity and detail there, I think that would help make a determination as to its significance or insignificance.
Okay. Any other comments on the adequacy of the environmental document? I'll just make one on the, on the bluff excavation. We have dueling technical experts here tonight, and I think that Mr. Jeanette's credentials in dealing with bluff properties are well-known. He's never had a, he's never had a failure. As I said, on the Portobello project, it only took him 30 days to excavate 20,000 yards, and if this is 5,000 yards more, there's no way it's going to take six months to excavate it. So it kind of, it kind of leads me to look, to question the credibility of the other, the other evidence presented by that particular, by that particular expert. So I don't, I don't particularly feel that that's something necessary to be addressed. I'm satisfied that the traffic is mitigated to a level of insignificance, and however, I do think that some legitimate issues have been brought up on the view aspect, so that, and that we should probably get some further information there. It sounds like that would not require a recirculation if we just asked for that additional information?
You mean the view aspects of the issue of the scenic resource with regards to the docks?
Yes.
Yes, especially to clarify the fact, and just to kind of add to the conversation for the council's awareness, as you pointed, as the mayor pointed out earlier in the hearing, this MND will be used by the Harbor Commission to evaluate the docks and the placement of the docks and their configuration. So that's not what the council's approving tonight. They're approving the information. So I think that if we come back with additional information, then the council can make their own determination on, on whether there's an impact there. But I just think that that's additional information that needs to be brought back.
Right, and the Harbor Commission won't be, they're not going to evaluate the scenic, scenic aspect of it. They're just going to be...
No.
Traffic and...
Right, exactly. So the, the whole point of this is just for the environmental document that they will have, and the Coastal Commission will have to evaluate, because they'll have to approve the, finally, the, the permit for the docks as well.
Okay. Well, just listening to the, the other members of the council here, it sounds like the bluff and the traffic aren't resonating with the majority of the council members up here, but there might be an issue on the view. So what would be the appropriate motion if we wanted additional information on the view?
I, I think it would be to have staff come back with additional information and do additional analysis on whether that, the cove area is a scenic resource, whether an analysis of the boat's impact on that as opposed to other areas in the city is, is something that would be necessary to do, to evaluate if it is indeed a scenic resource that's separate from anywhere else in the harbor.
Okay.
And then, I apologize. And then the council could take, the other thing I think we can also look at is the adequacy or the substantial issues of this information, because I know the council does have to, we do have to be able to advise the council, and I think it would help us to make a record on the adequacy of whether this expert opinion is substantial evidence because we don't know how accurate it is in, in its representation. So we can provide that information to you and come back with a revised resolution for approval of the environmental document. So moved.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. I'd just say one thing before we, before we vote on it. One of the things that, that I've prided myself on over the years is we've got a strong record in all of our environmental documentation that we do, and so I think in a project of this nature, you know, being cautious is, is probably the best approach to protect the validity of our environmental documents. Any other comments or discussion?
Yes, just one more. I, I can't pass the opportunity here to express some frustration with the fact that this project has been well-known for a long time. The fundamental shape of it has been well-known for a long time, and for substantial new expert opinion to come forth the day that we have to sit here and try to make a decision on it is very frustrating and inappropriate, in my view, and very avoidable. And so I hope we don't have another experience like that, because if we do, I'm specifically going to ignore that information in making my decision. I, I just, it's very frustrating.
Did you, were you able to find anything about the council policy as far as...
No, I apologize, I wasn't able to look at that. But not only the day, but five minutes before the meeting was when this was first presented to us.
Well, and it's also a disservice to the people who submitted, because we're sitting up here trying to read, trying to listen, trying to read something. I mean, we have, I mean, we have, what, 20 or 30 pages that was submitted to us when we walked in here today. And so you guys, you know, when, when it comes in that late, you don't really get a good review of your materials either.
How do we protect ourselves from, when this comes back to the council, that someone doesn't come in and lay another 30 pages and try and enter it into the environmental record?
At this point, the public hearing is closed, and so...
So that no more information can be submitted?
Yes.
It's frustrating, Mr. Hen, but part of the process, unfortunately.
I don't think it has to be.
Okay, please vote. Yes.
Count, Sharon Wood was questioning whether you did, I thought, I thought I heard you say you closed the public hearing.
I did.
Okay.
Absolutely. Okay.
Motion carries.
The next aspect of this is the project itself. Obviously, we can't approve the project tonight, but I think that in all fairness to everyone that spent three, three and a half hours here, that, that we all weigh in on this project. Councilwoman Gardner? Do you have any comments you want to make on the project itself?
All right. I was looking through all my notes. I really like this project. I've always liked the architecture, and I really appreciate what the proponents have come back with in terms of the enlarged view. They've tried to make it smaller. I have gone back and forth, though I cannot tell you how many times, as far as is it too much of an impact? I think it's, is a unique site, and I like the fact it's unique architecture. I think that sets it off. I, I admit that when we raised it, I, I think I came, was thinking it would be maybe a little bit smaller when it came back, and I was still, it still seemed big. But the bluff is being protected. We will see that bluff. And separation, I didn't realize they were essentially two buildings. I think that there's still some tweaks that we can make, but all in all, I, I think the proponent has tried to meet what we have asked him to do.
Councilwoman Curry?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the applicant, Mr. Julian. I, you know, we see a lot of these types of projects, and I don't know of anyone who has been more open in terms of sharing his plans nor inviting the public and the community in to see and participate with him in the design of the plan, nor in his own way, I think, have attempted to be responsive to the comments that he has received, and I think Mr. Julian deserves great credit for that. And I'd also like to thank the leading opponents of the project, Mrs. McIntosh, Mrs. Beck, Mrs. Velay, who I've met with in my office, who have been cordial, who have been professional, and provided helpful information in trying to evaluate the project, and have really, I think, advanced the, the process as we've gone through this. I gave a speech recently, and I said, you know, being on the city council is not like being in the legislature where there's a party leader and good guys and bad guys, and you pretty much know, you know, right and wrong. It's more like being a judge, because you're always evaluating competing versions of truth, usually among neighbors, in trying to reach decision and judgment for what's best for the community. Here, when we, when we dealt with this project in August, we gave specific direction to the applicant to go back and to move up his predominant line of development. And that was the direction that we gave him at that point in time. That was the direction that SPAN asked for in their letter of May 16th, when they commented upon the project. And the applicant went back and did that. I've been out, I've walked the project, I've looked at the sightlines, I've looked at the impact on the various neighbors, and I appreciate the disruption that, you know, excavating a spot and putting a building project in for 24, 30 months is, is going to be on a neighborhood. But, you know, we, we can't trample on Mr. Julian's property rights without putting all of our property rights at risk. I really do believe he's been responsive to what we've asked him to do. I do believe it's going to be a good project that will enhance the community, it will enhance our property tax values, and it will enhance the neighborhood as a whole. So I, I think I plan to support this project.
Councilman Webb?
I too support the, the project. I think I've made my comments related to the, the boat docks and such. I think that, that when you look at this as eight units and, which turns out to be roughly about seven units per acre, when most of this development in the area is probably closer to 15 to 20 units per acre, that this is the type of density that I feel very comfortable with. Yes, it's a big building, but it's a big lot. And when I look at it and compare it to the other bluff views that were, have been shown tonight, I don't think it's out of proportion, and I think it will be a definite improvement and a landmark within the area. I guess that if, if I were asked for anything or asked about anything that I, I'm a little uneasy about, is I always have, well, let's see, as far as setbacks are concerned, side yards and front yard setbacks, I don't like to see modifications and, and things that go into those setbacks, so. But that's really the only thing. I think that they have been pretty well answered, and nobody else seemed to be concerned about that, so that would be my only concern. I think that this is a, a really good-looking development that will fit in on that street when this gets completed.
I just have a question here, because, I mean, I'm assuming, since we're not voting on tonight, that we will have further discussion. I have all sorts of issues with some of the conditions and everything, but that will be for the next, next go-round.
I just think it's fair to give folks a reading of what you have on this project.
Right, no, but I'm, so as far as I'm with you, Don, I'm concerned about some of the encroachments, and I don't know if this is the time to discuss them or not, or whether we wait.
If you want to bring them up, I, you know, give them two, three weeks to work on it.
I am concerned about the, the view from Begonia Park, that I don't know that it is insignificant, and the, any place in the view where the balconies protrude, I think that's, that's an issue. So I would like to see some, maybe some, another exhibit that would clarify that for me.
Councilman Hen?
I get, I get to go now?
Yeah.
It's, again, just following up on Councilmember Webb's comments, it is a larger lot. It will be a larger development, and so per se, that's not a problem for me. I did struggle through the issue on the general plan, that it's clear this is an issue that is susceptible to reasonable differences of opinion about the applicability of general plan. And so having thought about it a lot, though, I'm persuaded that it is substantially consistent with the general plan. And so for those reasons, I'm generally in favor of the project, subject to getting more information at the next meeting.
Councilman Rosansky?
Well, I guess I have a little different take on the thing. I, I'm still not satisfied as to how this parking arrangement's going to work. I mentioned it, the last time the project came here, you know, I don't know many places in town where we would, I, I know we're fighting this battle in West Newport now, where we have people that are parking, blocking sidewalks, and people have to walk around in the street to get around them. And it may not be a constant situation, but I would hope that maybe in the next three weeks, there could be some further look at redesigning that project to allow enough queuing of the cars on the site so that we're not blocking the public right of way. And I also struggle with whether this project complies with our general plan policies, and I'm not, I guess, as satisfied as Councilman Hen that it does. There are significant policies here. I guess I'll be considering it for the next three weeks when this comes back, and we'll see then. Thank you.
Councilwoman Daigle?
Well, I think it's understandable that there are different perspectives on the council concerning the project. The city recently completed substantial policy work in terms of its general plan and coastal land use plan, and we're in the process of writing up the implementation language or framework. So what, we're in the past, we may have had some tools in the zoning code to specifically go to, you know, we're now still interpreting some of our policies. And so, you know, certainly the applicant has enough critical mass to, in terms of votes, to consider, you know, to continue in the manner that it's going in. My concern about the project was as far as scale, you know, when you look at Carnation and the developments occurring there, and then you look at the, you see this project is going two stories beyond, you know, underground for that development. So my concern about it was connected to scale.
Okay. Well, my concerns about the project have been the scale and the mass of the structure that's above the existing grade, and I appreciate all the work that the applicant has done in providing us with a, a lot of information and being able to analyze that. This project is substantially reduced from what we were presented a number of months ago. It's been pulled way back up the bluff. The, the mass and the volume of it's been reduced substantially. It's still a large volume of space, if you will, above the grade. We do have our general plan policies that Councilman Rosansky referred to. We haven't, those policies are subject to numerous interpretations, and yet we haven't codified a lot of those into our codes, so it becomes very difficult to say how you're going to apply those, apply those policies. I think in an issue of fairness here to the applicant, they have done everything we asked them to do, although it didn't come out the way I thought it would, but they certainly did everything that, that we asked them to do. So I think that as it stands now, I am generally in support of the project also. I would ask one thing to be done, though. I do think that you need to look at everything you can do to soften the, the mass of that structure, and one of the things that on the base side, I believe, is critical, is you've indicated a number of, I'll call them landmark trees, for lack of a better term, the coast beefwood, that I think need to be, somehow with the staff between now and you come back, clearly identified as to the size, where they're going to be planted, as well as restrictions that when the new owners move in and the developer walks away and they all want their views back, that they can't be cutting the trees down, maybe having pruning envelopes around the trees, something of that nature, recorded in the, in the real estate documents so that every buyer and future buyer is well aware when they move into the place that those trees are permanent fixtures and they're not going to be able to be cut down. I think that'll go a long way to softening up the mass of the building as it appears from the, from the, from the base side of the property, and that's my primary concern at this point. The, we've closed the public hearing tonight, so if, if we continue this, what is going to be the procedure at the next meeting? We really don't want to go through another three hours of hearing everybody getting up and saying the same thing again.
Yeah, I think we'll have to see what the additional, whether there's any additional information that's different that might be subject to additional comments, but I think the procedure will be to basically continue this deliberation where you left off, keeping in mind what, what happened at this meeting.
So will we be able to leave a public comment to the new information that comes in so that we don't have to go back through excavation and all these other things? So we're really primarily talking about the view?
Yes.
And the coastal... And the coastal cove issue?
Yes. So, it'll be limited to any additional new information that's brought forth. It'll be limited to any additional comments on, on the resolution or any of the additional information that's brought forth on the environmental document. But I think the public comment period has been closed, and the public has had an opportunity to comment fully on the project. So, it, I think you will be able to limit, continue the deliberation, continue review of the information, and then have public comment on anything that's new.
Okay. What would be the appropriate date to continue this, too?
I was just going to ask that question of you. We maybe should ask it of the applicant, though, also.
And staff. I mean, it's good to work both ways on this. Okay. Mr. Janet, do you have any idea?
I'm trying to get one right now, consensus. Possibly, I believe, the next meeting is the 12th, the one after that, the 26th?
September 12th.
Oh, it's 26th, dear Dark.
September 9th.
September 9th. Or August 12th.
From staff's point of view, it would be September the 9th.
I think from a staff point of view, that might be helpful.
What are we seeing? I'm sorry.
Because the turnaround time, even though we do have three weeks, the turnaround, turnaround time would be two weeks to get all that done.
August 12th is the other?
No.
It's not August 12th. We'll come back for August 12th.
I also have a question. Leilani, are you going to save all this for us, or do I have to go and?
Okay, Mr. Janet?
Yes, it sounds to me like the consensus is going to September the 12th?
Not 9th.
9th, excuse me. Ouch, but we'll accept that.
Well, better to do a good job and take an extra couple of weeks.
I totally agree.
Let's get this, get this done.
Thank you very much for your deliberation, too.
Okay, all entertain a motion to continue to September 9th?
Second.
Okay, please vote. Okay, thank you all very much for your politeness and demeanor this evening. Thank you. If we could be quiet on the way out, we've got extra or other business to attend to here. We've got 10 minutes to get it done. Now, we have another public hearing. Okay, item number 25, award of non-exclusive solid waste collection franchise to California Waste Services. Any information you feel compelled to give us?
No, this is placed to hold a public hearing and give second reading of the ordinance and grant the franchise.
Okay, I'll open the hearing. Does anyone wish to comment? Saying none, I'll close the hearing.
Move the action.
Please vote.
Councilmember Rosansky?
Oh, sorry. I move the action.
Motion carries.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
I moved, that we moved Dave Lebo out of the room.
Public comments, public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Empty.
Did you forget something, Dick?
Yeah, I do. When do I get to see what the coastal theater's going to look like? It seems to me that that, we haven't published that, we haven't shown anybody, we haven't circulated anything that that was even going to be made. And now, they're working on it. Of course, they've torn the whole front off of it, but there was no circulation or notice to any neighbors of that.
Dick, there didn't need to be. It was a building permit. You can go down to the Building Department and request to look at the plans at the counter if you wish. Am I correct, Mr. Lebo?
Okay, we'll have to do that. Thank you.
Good evening. I guess I'm the only one left. Jan Vander Sloot, Newport Heights. I wanted to bring to your attention an item that's coming up before the Coastal Commission in August, in, on August 7th, or August 7th, I believe, on Thursday. They're going to be considering the Laboni Project, which is a coastal bluff project on Ocean Boulevard, speaking about coastal bluffs. So, I'm giving you this handout, which is showing the Laboni House and the fact that they want to build a new deck, which is on the second page. It shows you the diagram of the new deck. But that new deck is basically going to be built at the level of the base of the white staircase. In other words, they plan to basically destroy half the coastal bluff at the Laboni Project. And I've shown the surrounding houses, which show the coastal bluff going all the way up to the house, but the two properties at the end of that group of houses are going almost all the way down to the sand. And so, here, and this is because they, somebody has determined the predominant line of development to be that development of the last two houses. So, if they extend that line all the way across to Laboni, that's where you get half of the coastal bluff being destroyed. Now, the reason why I bring this up is because you did not see this project. The local approval, as they designate in the staff report for the Coastal Commission, this project was approved by the Planning Department. It didn't go before the Planning Commission, it didn't go before the City Council. It was just approved by the Planning Department. And I think it's an appropriate issue for you to discuss because we're talking about the complete bluff above the main Corona del Mar state beach. That whole row of houses all along there is subject to this same kind of treatment where we're only going to see 20, 30 feet at the bottom of the bluff being preserved, and that's it. All the rest of it is going, the whole middle third of the bluff will be destroyed if Laboni gets passed by the Coastal Commission, and the Coastal Commission staff is believing the architect, who is Brian Janet, that the predominant line of development is 30-some feet. And so, they're saying, the coastal staff is saying that the surrounding, the surrounding houses are the same, are at the level of the new deck, namely, the middle of the bluff, which is not true. So, what I'm asking you to do is to consider asking the coastal staff between now and August 7th for the next two weeks to postpone this item and bring it back to you, bring it back to the city. So, if you can determine whether or not this development is in accord with your more recent passing of the coastal land use predominant line of development and what we did last November in trying to preserve the coastal bluff. Because if we don't, if we let Laboni pass, then we're going to see the entire bluff above Corona del Mar state beach cut in half, basically. It's all going to be like the last two houses. It's not going to be like these houses.
Thank you, Jan. Okay, seeing no other public comments, Planning Commission agenda, Mr. Lebo?
Mayor members of City Council, I guess the important actions were taken, dealt with the Sejour wine, or, excuse me, wine shop at 3400 Villalito. This was continued from April. This started as a revocation because the operation was more of a restaurant and nightclub than it was a retail wine shop. And over the objections of the owners, the Planning Commission decided to impose stiffer conditions of approval that would definitely make this in line with what was originally approved as a retail wine shop. So, you may hear more about that one in the near future. The next item was the Powers Residence, 2223 Pacific Drive. This was modifications as well as a request from the Planning Department to the Planning Commission to make a determination on interim design standard number seven as to the extent to which this proposed residence complied with the requirement that the building be designed to be consistent with the topography of the property rather than altering the property to accommodate the building. The Planning Commission did find that this was consistent with the criteria number seven with some revisions from Mr. Janet, who, again, was the architect, essentially extending the landscaping and what was going to be the front yard. So, a little bit went on both sides there. Lastly, 9:30 sushi. This was a request for the sushi bar at 9:30, Coast Highway, to be expanded by about 395 square feet, required a parking waiver. After the study was completed, showed the parking was adequate, the Planning Commission did agree to the expansion as well as to change from beer and wine license to distilled spirits and beer and wine service on-site. That's it.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Next item is current business designation of voting delegates for the 2008 League Annual Conference. Mr. Dow.
Mr. Mayor, the conference is going to be in Long Beach, September 24th through the 27th. So, normally, it is council's practice to designate a council member to serve to cast any votes for the City Council and also a, a alternate. So, we normally ask to see who intends to go, and that kind of decides who the vote caster will be.
Councilman Webb?
I nominate the mayor. Mayor protestant.
I'm not going.
I second that motion.
I'm kind of surprised because Councilman Curry goes to a lot of meetings.
Call the question.
Um, no, I'm, yeah.
Call for the vote, call for the vote.
We are going to get an award at that meeting. I think it's a dark.
Is anyone planning on attending?
I guess I can pick off.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to designate Councilwoman Deagle?
So moved.
How about Skag? Anyone interested?
Is there, is there a motion to designate Councilwoman Deagle as the alternate?
What? No.
Okay, I don't think we need to designate an alternate, do we?
No.
We're good. We're gold.
Got a little suspicious when you were looking at me reading that. Ms. Vlado, when is the conference taking place?
It is September the 24th through the 27th.
Thank you. I'll be there, thanks.
27th is when you have to be there to vote.
Thank you.
Does that mean that we're also going to pay for her registration in three nights up there?
Yeah, Long Beach. Last.
Absolutely. Travel, too.
Everything is negotiable.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, next item is, oh, I'm sorry. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Next item is approval of recruiting firm recommended by ad hoc council committee to conduct city attorney recruitment. Councilman Webb, did you have anything to?
Nothing more. I think the report is, is adequate. I, since the report was written, the Alliance has indicated that they would provide us with a two-year guarantee, which means that they will go out and find us somebody else if the attorney that we select leaves us within a two-year period. And other than that, we reviewed applications from seven firms, interviewed three firms, and we feel that Alliance is the, the best of the ones that we checked out.
Move the action.
Okay, seeing no one in the public to speak, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the City Council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Okay, any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to adjourn the meeting tonight in the memory of Lois Erwin, who passed away on July 11th. She was born in Buffalo in 1920. She attended College of the Pacific, where she met Al Erwin, and they were married in 1942. After World War II, they moved back to his hometown of Newport Beach with their family. Lois was a Girl Scout and a Tri-HIY leader, a teaching assistant at Martin School. And, and Al went to UCI to launch their swimming and water polo program. She became active in UC, in the UCI Athletic Boosters, also worked at the, at the Friends of the Library bookstore. She and Al were married 66 years, and we extend our condolences to her family. And we're adjourned.